All right, welcome everyone to the Bothell City Council Meeting for June 9th, 2020. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended until June 17th. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via links from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute his or her connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers, during the staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. So at this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position on the call. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe. Councilmember McAuliffe, please unmute your mic and say here.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All right, in addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city clerk Laura Hathaway, city attorney Paul Byrne, police chief Ken Suberlick, sustainability assistant Emily Warnock, community development director Mike Kaderman, economic development manager Jeannie Ash, senior planner Bruce Blackburn. We'll also have staff from King County Solid Waste and Makers Architecture and Urban Design, who will be joining us on specific agendas later in the meeting. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, at the appropriate times, I'll be calling each member, asking if you wish to speak. We have cards this week, so please hold up your card in the lower corner of your screen and I'll see that and call on you. And remember to please mute your microphone when not speaking. All right, on to meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda tonight? All right, seeing a shaking head from Jeannie. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the special presentation on the King County Solid Waste Proposal. So sustainability assistant Emily Warnock. There you are. All right, take it away.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to introduce King County Solid Waste Division's Pat McGrawson, John Walsh, and Dorian Warner to provide a briefing on King County's solid waste rate proposal for 2021 to 2022.
Thank you, mayor and council, for this opportunity to present, as Emily has indicated, a proposal for our 2021-2022 rate adjustment for how we will serve and support the greater parts of King County. Better part of the presentation that you're going to hear about this evening will come directly from John Walsh, who's our strategy communications and performance manager for the division. And his team has worked diligently in the development of this rate proposal as well as you will hear this evening on alternatives to the rate proposal. I wanted to just set the stage briefly on a few things to know as you are hearing and receiving this information. And so if we could go to the next slide. First, I want to acknowledge the reality that you certainly know and I want you to know that myself and our staff are acutely aware of the devastating impacts that our community has already faced as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the ongoing economic uncertainty facing our region. It's concerning to know that cities have already begun to feel the effects and have to make very difficult decisions. And the county is also in those similar circumstances. And I just want to assure you that that is not a lens that is foreign to us. It's one that we too are struggling with. And yet, in the face of that, we're here before you suggesting that we increase rates to serve the regional needs for solid waste in the future. And we're going to talk about that dichotomy a little bit. One thing I want you to know is, as we've approached this, this is largely driven as a result of tonnage loss. And it's a revenue issue versus an expenditure issue. What you're going to hear this evening is that we have, through the diligence of a lot of hard work from John, his team, and folks from across the enterprise of solid waste, we have managed to whittle away at our expenditures and reduce them significantly, $37 million to be specific, enabling us to operate on a proposed budget that would be equal to that of which we used in 2019. So in the course of preparing this rate proposal, we have already made some difficult, challenging decisions to cut our expenses way back from where they would normally be, to absorb the inflationary costs, which are real and have actually hit our business enterprise, and yet be able to still grow and develop important parts of our both capital programs and infrastructure and services to attain our environmental goals and to do so without increasing our overall baseline expenses. This ensures that we can fulfill important commitments that we made to you and the other 36 cities as we entered into our 2019 comprehensive plan as well as as we continue to strive towards our environmental goals across the county. So one of the changes that we have introduced along with this proposed rate increase is the beginning of an effort to move away from really an overreliance on tipping fees. Today, we are paid only when our bridge comes across our scales. And yet, most of the materials in our region are recycled. And in fact, that's what we want. And when we talk about the revenue problem that we're facing, it's largely driven because of our progress in recycling. We pushed out construction and demolition debris. And as a result of that great work, instead of burying those, we put them into the economy, but we eroded our revenue base. Now, in response to city feedback that we've heard in the last few months as we've begun to explore this rate option, we have heard some cities express strong preference for no rate increase at all. And we will share with you this evening that we have looked at those alternatives. And essentially, when you look at the choices that we've already made to reduce our expenditures by $37 million, there are certainly some challenges and some distastefulness associated with those difficult decisions. And yet, when we look at what it would take to absorb all of these increases and pass no increase on through the next biennium, the impacts are even of greater and grave concern. And we'll talk a little bit about those too. So the bottom line is what we believe we've done is brought forward to the cities the best of really a bad situation. There are no easy choices ahead of us, but we think we've put together the most reasonable package that can again ensure that we can provide adequate services, advance our environmental goals, and also not reduce fees in one case only to have them creep up in another. And again, we can talk a little bit more about that. I'd like to turn this presentation over to John Walsh, who will take you through some of the details behind that. And of course, we'll stay engaged through this conversation and beyond to answer any questions that you may have. But I'll turn it over to John at this stage.
Great, thanks, Pat. So before I get into the things you should know that Pat just kind of highlighted, we're going to do a little bit of math. It's pretty basic arithmetic. So this is just really at a high level how that per ton, that tipping fee is calculated. So as you can see, the first thing we do is we project what our expenditures are going to be. So you know, how much is it going to cost us to run those transfer stations, do recycling programs, build all those capital projects? You know, what does that look like over the next two years? Then we subtract out other revenues. So you know, the tipping fee covers about 90% of our revenue streams. But we do have some other revenues, you know, like if we sell some surplus properties or you know, some of the revenues we get from yard waste recycling, appliance recycling, things like that. So we kind of subtract those out from the expenditures. And that gives us the total amount that needs to be recovered from the tipping fee, right? So basically, that gives us an amount, you divide it by the tonnage forecast, and that gives you what the per ton rate should be. So that tonnage forecast has a significant impact on this, right? If it's lower, then that per ton rate will go up, right? That's how the division works. If it's higher, then it goes down. So it has a very big impact on things. And you'll see a lot of this math kind of filtered throughout the rest of this presentation. But just wanted to give you kind of a baseline about, you know, in general, how this thing is calculated. So you know, the next couple of slides dive into the first two things to know that Pat talked about. So it was the effects from COVID-19 and the impact this has on our revenues. So I just mentioned this, about 90% of our revenues come from garbage tons. So the forecast is very important. Here's a little, you know, trip through history where the blue columns are what we forecasted the tonnage to be in that year. And then I'll start showing you what the actuals are, and those will show up in green. So you can see in 2015 through 2017, we actually had more revenues than forecasted. This is because we had a lot better economy than we were projecting in our forecast. And the North Seattle station, the one in Fremont, was closed. So some of their trash ended up making it to our shoreline station. So we had more tonnage than we were expecting. 2018 was a different story. We, Pat mentioned this, we had a successful CND diversion ban implemented at our transfer station. So you know, this is basically saying if you're bringing in a bunch of brick, asphalt, shingles, all that stuff, it should be going to a recycling processor instead. And you can see some of the impacts from that. You can see that it actually led to a 10% drop in tonnage compared to the forecast in both 2018 and 2019. So this is good from a zero waste of resources perspective. That's where we want to divert materials of value from the landfill, right? We're putting those materials to better use than just throwing it away. However, it puts upward pressure on the rate, right, when we do that. And I'll get into this a little bit more about how we have a broken business model currently. Now, every February, we actually update our forecast. We do an official forecast, so this is four months ago when we did this. And you can see what our projection was for 2020. So you know, two years ago, we projected about a million tons. February, we projected about 905,000 tons. And then COVID hit, and now we're projecting about 770,000 tons. That's a 25% drop basically compared to our projections a few years ago. So that's a pretty significant drop in tonnage. And this next slide gets a little bit more into, you know, the impacts from COVID. So basically, that blue line is what we had projected in February of this year. And then we have an economist on my team, and then there's also the county's economist. And they got together as soon as, you know, the impacts from COVID-19 started happening. And they reran a bunch of their numbers, right? In particular, what they looked at was employment and retail sales, both of which drive tonnage, right? The more people working, the more people spending money, the more waste that's produced, right? And yeah, I mean, as we know, this is some unprecedented unemployment claims happening, right? People getting laid off, businesses closing, people not spending money. So this has been really unprecedented and really just devastating things. And it's having an impact on the tonnage forecast. And so that's what you see here. So they took a couple of these factors and they came up with a low, medium, and high impact scenario. And you can see the drops there. For this rate, we're actually using that green line, the median impact line, right? It's somewhat conservative, right? It's between the low and the high, has a longer recovery period, more like a great recession type recovery period than like a quick bounce back. So when we're doing rate setting, we want to try to be conservative. And so, you know, one thing to note is, again, bringing it back to how tonnage impacts our revenues, you know, for reference, if you just look at 2020, if you just compare what we thought we were going to get, that 900,000 to the yellow line, the 827,000, that's a 77,000 drop in tons. That's $11 million that we're not going to get anymore. For the green line, it's 19 million, and for the purple line, it's 30 million, right? If these scenarios play out compared to what we thought we were going to get. So we've seen significant revenue losses just in this period that will have an impact in the next rate period, which is the proposal that we're going for. And again, those numbers were just for 2020, and this has a longer term impact, right? It's going to take a while to get out of all these things that are happening on right now, right? It's going to, it might take several years. So this has a longer term impact on revenues because again, tonnage drives revenue. And that's really what this next slide shows. And again, broken business model, going to keep repeating this, 90% of our revenues come from disposing garbage, right? But we had this vision to achieve zero waste of resources by 2030. And really what that looks like is, you know, our last waste characterization study said that about 70% of what we send to the landfill actually has value. Things like food waste, lumber, paper, plastics, all that stuff. You know, there could have been a better reuse for it, recycling for it, just a better use for it. And so if we're successful in achieving this vision, I mean, our tonnage could go from like 900,000 tons to 300,000 tons or something, which if we have the same business model, the same revenue structure, and that's going to cause significant rate hikes, right? And you'll see later today in this presentation that we've started to address this a little bit. We're trying to again move away from overreliance on that tipping fee. One other thing to know is we've also started a task force made up of cities and haulers to actually work on what the ultimate rate structure will be for 2023. So we're actively, you know, trying to propose this rate as well as kind of work on the next rate structure. So because we know this is a big deal and we need to move away from this model. I guess just people have questions, just like just chime in or something and I'll stop talking. We can answer a question because there's a lot of content here, I know. So you know, another one of the things that now Pat hit on this is that we found about 37 million in reductions to keep our expenditures for the next biennium, '21, '22, flat with this current biennium's budget. So you can see that on the graph here, right? The top line is our 1920 budget, 318 million. The bottom line is what's in our rate proposal, and again, 318 million, so we kept it flat. And you know, this was a process to get there. And you can see in that middle line, we had a rate proposal all ready to go in February and March, you know, right before COVID hit. And what we were projecting then was about 335 million. COVID hit, and we revisited everything basically, and we found another 17 million that we could reduce, you know, to mitigate the impact of the rate increase, right? So this has been quite the process. Few things, just kind of diving down into these colors. So the blue bar is what's in our operating budget, right? So this is like kind of, you know, operating our transfer stations, recycling programs, all that stuff. Didn't really go up much, went from 219 this biennium, we're projecting 223 next biennium. Some of the notable additions are, you know, we want to improve our management of our assets and our safety and emergency response. And the idea here is that if we improve those, those will actually lower costs in the future, right? If we're doing better upkeep of assets, they won't break down. You know, if something breaks down, it costs more to fix. And then again, if we can, you know, be more safe, we can keep people safer, there'll be less people out of work, maybe lower insurance payments, things like that. So those are all, these are all ideas, again, try to mitigate future rate increases. The green area is our transfers to our capital. So this is like things like paying our debt service on building new transfer stations or cash financing equipment purchases, like new trucks or, you know, what's called yellow iron at the landfill. And I'll actually get into that a little bit more in the next slide because you can see that was really bouncing significant savings through some innovative financing. It goes from that 99 down to 73 next year. So the yellow areas were investments in regional environmental goals. This includes things like climate change, climate mitigation actions. So we want to purchase electric trucks. We want to improve landfill gas collection at Cedar Hills. Also gets into the zero waste of resources actions, you know, so we want to focus on diverting food and paper from the landfill. These are two of the major materials that continue to be thrown away. But again, they have higher alternative uses, right? You could compost that food waste instead of throwing it in the landfill. Or you could take that paper and turn it into new paper, right, a different type of paper product. So we want to figure out how do we get there? You know, what technologies, what legislation, policies, like what sort of things do we need to do to get those out of the waste stream and into a more of a recycling reuse stream? Also included in that yellow $11 million is we need to recover or we need to be able to pay to continue to recycle paper, plastics, metal, and glass at our transfer stations. So I don't know, people have heard of China soar before, but basically about two years ago, China said, "We're no longer accepting, you know, recyclable materials from the US." And that made the prices of these commodities just drop to historic lows. So you know, in the past, maybe these recyclable materials were helping pay for themselves, but now they're not. So like our expenses have gone up, so we need to be able to pay for that, to continue to offer that service at our stations. And then that orange one is inflation, right?
Deputy Mayor Zornz, you have a question?
I just have a quick question. Because Ken Zornz and I was wondering about it. Is there any updates on how that exchange is working with recyclables with them? Or are we finding an effective way to do it ourselves? Can you do a little, at some point, a little segue on that, on recyclables?
Yeah, I mean, I totally know, we're not sending recyclables to China. At least in our area, is what I've heard from the haulers, is that they've found other outlets for those materials. So they've been able to.
And by China, you mean all of Southeast Asia and?
No, we are using other international markets to have our mixed paper and mixed plastics process.
Can I ask, continents are going to?
You know, the... I think we would be best served to, we can provide that information to be fully accurate. We're happy to provide that.
It's a rabbit trail, but it would be nice at some point to update on it. Thank you.
We're happy to provide that information for you. I'm also happy to share with you that there is more capabilities for those material.
And that resonates with me because we ought to clean up our own messes, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that resonates with me. Thank you, guys.
Council, hold on. Councilmember McAuliffe, you had a question?
I do not have a question, no. Did you say McNeil or McAuliffe?
McAuliffe.
Hold on, sorry. Question. So Snohomish County, when they have their expenditure that goes into the general fund for Snohomish County, where does the money in King County go?
So we are an enterprise fund, so we are, we're almost like a business. I mean, basically, we have to have our, the rate that we're charging pays for all of our expenditures. So we don't get money from the general fund. Ironically, we actually pay them rent for Cedar Hill landfill. So but we don't get any like taxpayer money or anything like that.
No, I want to know, because Snohomish County's goes into, their solid waste rate goes into the general fund. Does any of the King County's general, solid waste rate go into our general fund at King County? That's a question.
Yeah, so the only thing we pay to the general fund is rent at Cedar Hills. And that's about, I think it's about $3 million a year or so. And then of course, we have central rate charges, right, that we pay central information technology and, you know, fleet and stuff like that. But for the general fund, it's really just that rent charge for Cedar Hills.
Got you, got you. So just so you know, John, my son's a recycler.
Yeah.
Big, big, big. United Recycling?
Okay, uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah. And yeah, so I know a lot about what you're doing. I see it in action, and it's pretty impressive.
Great, thank you.
Very impressive, yep.
Cool. Any other questions on the expenditure?
That looks like it was it, so yeah, back to you.
Okay, great, yeah. So I think the big takeaway here is that, you know, again, we found significant reductions to, again, absorb these inflationary impacts at $11 million in inflation as well as invest in these regional goals, right? The things like zero waste of resources, climate change, continuing recycling programs, right? So we did all that, and again, we were able to keep it at that 318 million that is our current budget. So again, that's kind of that, that was in that expenditure bucket in the math slide at the beginning of this thing. So this next slide, it gets into that green bar that I just showed, which was the capital transfers, right? And so we mentioned this earlier where we're going into a period where we're starting to invest a lot in these capital projects that were identified in the comprehensive plan. That was just adopted last year, right? And so that's what this graph is showing you. On the left side, you can see is our projected capital expenditures. So it's about $500 million over the next six years. And it's really three projects that are driving a lot of this expenditure. You can see it there. The yellow, it's something called Skirps, it's the South County Recycling and Transfer Station. The orange is NERTS, the Northeast Recycling Transfer Station. And then Area 9, which is a new area at the landfill, so we can, you know, maximize the life at the landfill. So you can see there's some pretty significant chunks of expenditures happening just on those three projects. I think the thing to focus on is '21, '22, right? Because that's what this rate period is for. So you can see, this is when, you know, in this period, we're going to start doing construction for Skirps and Area 9. And then that big orange bar in 2022 is land acquisition for NERTS, right? So NERTS again is replacing the Houghton Station that's just down in Kirkland, right? Very expensive land around here, so if we end up moving to a different place, it's going to cost quite a bit of money. So and what's showing on the right, the little mountain graph there, is basically the impact that the capital expenditures on the left have on the rate. So what you can see here is that, you know, under sort of traditional ways that we finance this, where we just debt finance things like building those new transfer stations, typically, we would cash finance Area 9, right? So typically, any landfill project was cash financed. And so that's the impact that you're seeing here, where you can see there's a, the dark orange is the cash financing and the light orange is the debt financing. And so from a rate perspective, you know, you're looking at about $120 million that we would have needed to recover through the rate under the old way of doing things. Now, the change that we made is we said, you know, we're going to start debt financing these new area developments at the landfill, right? Because this makes financial sense to do that, right? I mean, you don't, when you start cash financing these, you know, large expensive capital projects, you really have to increase the rate in order to get the cash funding to do that, right? And so what this is showing you is that that $120 million that was there previously is now only like 60 million in the next rate period. And so that's a lot less money that needs to be raised through the rate, which, you know, again, lowers that expenditure box that I showed in the math slide, right? So this was like some really, really good stuff that had a major impact in our expenditures and really brought the cost down. Let's see, another thing that we had talked about as things to know is, you know, we want to move away from that overreliance on the tipping fee. This is the fifth time I've said about 90% of our revenues come from that tipping fee. And so this is like kind of a way to start moving away from that, is what we're showing here. One thing to note, again, is like as we move away from overreliance on the tipping fee, if we introduce different fees, that actually lowers that tipping fee, right? Because again, the second box in that math slide is other revenue, that we subtract that out from expenditures. Therefore, that we would lower the amount needed in the tipping fee. So what this shows you, you know, the left column is the materials that we collect at our transfer stations. The middle one is what we currently charge, and the right one is what we're going to propose for next year. The things to note are the $5 transaction fee. You can see that $5 transaction in red for both garbage and recycling. And so, you know, this is again, kind of a step away from the tipping fee, where we want to recover some of our costs through a transaction fee, right? It costs us money to provide a transaction to people at our transfer station. So this would be an additional $5 on top of what they're paying for garbage or even the free recyclable, right? I mean, if you just bring in paper, plastics, that's just, you don't pay anything. And so now, we're going to charge $5 for those transactions. And really, that gets at the messaging, you know, you partly get that the messaging about recycling isn't free, right? And one thing to note is, you know, we ran this idea by our advisory committees. So we have what's called Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is basically made up of the cities, and then the Solid Waste Advisory Committees, which is like haulers, interested residents, you know, processors, things like that. And there's a, you know, there's a different proposal on the table early on, and they gave us feedback and said, you know what? You should only put it on garbage and recycling. So we really took their advice, and what you see is what transpired from that conversation with our advisory committees. So we really took their advice, and what you see is what transpired from that conversation with our advisory committees. You know, another thing to point out is that mattress line. So we started piloting collection of mattresses at our Bow Lake facility, I think in twenty seventeen. Basically, you know, you come in and it kind of goes off into a separate corner of the station, and then, you know, ship those to a place like DTG, who then rips those mattresses apart, takes all the metal, foam, et cetera, and recycles all that. Before, we weren't doing that, so we piloted out, so we know it can be done. The issue is that we're just charging that tipping fee. And, you know, we're allowing people to bring in up to six mattresses. So if somebody brought in up to six mattresses, you know, they're really only paying about four dollars per mattress to bring it in, and it cost us about twenty-two bucks a mattress to recycle it. So the reason why we're charging thirty dollars is because we're trying to move to pricing models where we're either, you know, it's full cost recovery, so we're recovering for the cost of the service, or it's set based on market pricing. So in this particular instance, it's based on market pricing. So there's private haulers that'll pick up mattresses for thirty dollars and take them to the right processors, right? And we don't want to undercut them, right? We don't want to charge twenty-two bucks or something and have everybody bring their mattresses to us, right? We really just want to be another outlet for people if, you know, if these private haulers aren't available. So we settled on thirty dollars a mattress for, as a new thing that we're going to implement. And the last fee is the yard waste fee. So you can see this one's going from the current seventy-five dollars per ton up to a hundred dollars per ton. It's been seventy-five dollars since twenty thirteen, so it's been a very long time since this thing has been increased. We did some analysis about our costs, and we actually think it costs closer to about a hundred and twelve bucks per ton to recycle yard waste. But again, we had discussions with our advisory committees and basically determined that a hundred bucks per ton was a reasonable increase. So that's what we're going to, so those are some of the other fees, again, that kind of help reduce the tipping fee that is ultimately proposed. This has been quite the journey to get to the place where we're at right now. It actually started almost like a year ago now. You know, I mean, last year, I started looking at our tonnage, and, you know, we saw some significant drops, right? Because of that successful commercial, construction and demolition diversion program we implemented. So, I mean, just an early projection, and you can see, we were thinking, our current rate, which is a hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents a ton, was going to go up. We would need to increase it thirty-three percent to a hundred and eighty-seven dollars per ton. One thing to note, these are all biennial rates. That's the way we've traditionally done them in the past, I don't know, ten years or so. And so, you know, biennial rate is if you set the rate once, and it's that rate for two years, right? And this is based off of, again, expenditure projections of three hundred fifty-five million and a tonnage forecast of one point nine million. But we obviously said that is way too high, we certainly can't do that. And we convened a rates task force internally, and actually, about two hundred employees participated in it. Almost two hundred ideas were presented, and we implemented a lot of the ideas. So again, we got a lot of good ideas from across the division, and you'll see that in the rate proposal. So basically, what happened is like we took all those ideas, and we were able to cut twenty million dollars in expenditures. However, when we reran the forecast, the tonnage also went down a hundred thousand dollars. So again, when the tonnage goes down, the rate goes up, right? So even though we found all this great way to reduce that expenditure box, that tonnage forecast box went down, which drives up the rate. So it kind of mitigated the impact of those reductions, right? But, you know, we went from a hundred and eighty-seven to a hundred and sixty-two dollars per ton. We basically cut that increase in more than half. This was pre-COVID, so early March. COVID hit, we reran that tonnage forecast that I just showed you, that actually dropped the tonnage two hundred thousand more tons over the period. That shoots the rate up, right? It's a great example where the tonnage went down and the rate went up when nothing else changed, right? So it went from a hundred and sixty-two back up to a hundred and seventy-six. And then, again, we've been working since March on this. I mean, we've been like, basically, every day, it feels like, and so we've done a lot of good stuff, you know? In, you know, in order to mitigate that decrease in the tonnage, we found another seventeen million in expenditure reductions, right? Another thing we did is we said, you know what? Let's move away from the biennial rates, right? If you have a biennial rate, you've got to kind of set it high that first year so you can have enough revenues for both years. And what we said is, you know, why don't we kind of stair-step this a bit, right? We know that we got to set it higher than normal, so let's stair-step it. And so we got it down to a six percent increase for next year, so going from a hundred and forty, basically, a hundred and forty-one dollars to a hundred and forty-nine. And then in twenty-twenty-two, it's another eight percent on top of that, so from the one forty-nine to the one sixty-one. So we did a lot of things to try to mitigate this. Again, like we even hit with a lot of curveballs here, and we're just rolling with it and trying to make things work here. So, you know, the last thing that we put on the things to know is that we want you to know that we looked at several different options, right? And so this is just a table of all the different options we've considered. So, and basically, the last three months with our advisory committees, we talked about options A, B, and C. And so, well, basically, what you're seeing here is A and B are options where we don't increase the rate at all next year, but then we have to increase it in that second year. And the only difference between A and B is that B introduces those other fees that I talked about, so like increasing, you know, adding the transaction fee, right? So again, when you do that, it lowers the tipping fee, and you can see that with the tipping fee in twenty-twenty-two, how it's about six bucks lower than option A, right? But the big takeaway here is like, if we don't do any increase next year, you can see twenty-four, twenty-eight percent increases the following year, right? That's just how it works, because if you're not going to increase it one year, you have to increase it a lot further the next. And then the green bar is what was, what our proposal's going to be, the six and the eight percent I just talked about. And then Pat mentioned, we got a lot of feedback last month that said, from a few cities anyways, that said, you know, show us an option where there's no increase at all. And so, you know, it's not on here, is what does twenty-twenty-three look like, right? And I mean, that's really hard to analyze, right? We have to make a ton of assumptions about it, but I'll tell you, I mean, it's got to be at least twenty-five, thirty percent. And that, you know, that doesn't even include, you know, kind of adding back expenditures that we delayed in this biennial, right? So, and that's what this next slide is going to get into, is kind of diving deeper into that option D, where there's no rate increase at all for the next biennial. And, you know, I mean, we heard the cities, you know, I mean, I get it, you know? I look around, and everyone's stressed out, cities are stressed out, residents are stressed out. I mean, I understand the ask, and it will take a lot of work to meet that ask. And so that's what this is showing here, right? In order to not have a rate increase at all, we need to find another twenty million. So again, we already found thirty-seven million to keep expenditures flat, and now we need to really start cutting down, and we need to find twenty million dollars. So this is a high-level summary of some of the options that we looked at. You know, the first line is the most drastic, but it's also one with the biggest impact, and this is station closures. And so basically, what this looks like is permanently closing the Renton Transfer Station, permanently closing the Cedar Falls Dropbox that's kind of out near North Bend, closing Cedar Hills on both Saturdays and Sundays. Right now, in our current rate proposal, we're actually going to move forward with closing it on Sundays because that's the least busy day of the week, but this would require closing it on Saturday as well. And the biggest painful thing is actually closing all stations. So Houghton, Shoreline, Algonah, Bow Lake, Vassal, all of those stations, and Enaqua, all those stations Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so going to a four-day work week, right? And there's significant, again, you can see a significant cost reduction, right? So that's sixteen out of the twenty million that we need, but, I mean, I guess one thing to note is that doesn't even get us to the full twenty million, right? So we got to do even more. But you can see, the curbside impact of the sixteen million is not a lot, right? And so again, like, what we charge is the tipping fee at the stations. That's what the commercial hauler pays us, that's what, you know, if you or I just go in there and we're dumping trash, that's what we pay at the station. And the commercial hauler is basically, you know, pass that fee on to the curbside customers, right? On to your monthly curbside bill. And so it's not a lot, right? So it's about a fifty cent impact, but you can see there's a lot of consequences if we do that. If you close all these stations, more traffic, more wait times. Ultimately, haulers may have to increase their rate, so it actually defeats the purpose of this, right? If we sort of have zero rate increase, then the haulers just add the increase, then, you know, it was for naught kind of thing. If they don't increase the rates, then they need to reduce their curbside services. And then you can see all the other options. I mean, we could take away recycling at the station, that's seven million. You can see the consequences. I think we tried to do this maybe eight years ago, and it, it was very unpopular, and we brought it right back. So that's something to think about, you know? We could just not invest in things like zero waste of resources or climate change, like I mentioned earlier. But, you know, those are regional environmental goals that we all agreed on. So, you know, and again, it's not going to help with greenhouse gas impacts. We could delay major CAP projects, so delaying Skirps, delaying NERTS has a minor impact, but, you know, delay services, Houghton's pretty old, right? It's built in the nineteen sixties. Another thing to note is, you know, doing construction projects create jobs, right? I mean, there's some estimates, some models that say, you know, the hundred million or whatever we're going to spend generates fourteen hundred ancillary jobs. So it's good to create jobs during the recovery, and if we delay it, then that doesn't happen. Another one is just support staff reductions. I mean, we could just, you know, look internally and not do any of those, you know, safety improvements or asset management improvements that we talked about. So it just kind of increases our risk there. Final slide is just the schedule. So we're going to transmit this rate to the executive on Thursday. They get a look at it for about a month and transmit it to the council in early July. And then they really need to pass it early September, because we need to notify cities by October first about any rate changes, so it can be implemented January one. So thanks, that's all my whole presentation there.
Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So my question is, what does this mean for our community, for the people who you serve?
What does that...
How does this rate increase impact them?
So if we do the six and the eight percent increase, it actually allows us to keep service levels where they're at. So there's no disruption to your curbside, you know, your curbside pickup. You can obviously come to our stations and continue to recycle, do all that stuff. And again, and it invests in, sorry, I got to stop sharing my screen. It invests in all these environmental, regional goals around the system, right? So it kind of keeps promoting recycling, you know, maybe further promotes it, get us to those goals about better recycling in the region.
And John, at what cost to a typical single-family household? How would this rate be reflected in a typical monthly bill to a single-family household?
Yeah, so the six percent increase next year is about forty-six cents on the average bill, and then the eight percent the following is about sixty-five cents a month. So well under a dollar for both of those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, what is your, what are your goals for the future? Are you still talking about putting an incinerator out by the Cedar Hill landfill? You know, what are you looking at? I mean, it's a fifteen percent increase, but what's down the road, and how much is that going to cost us?
Yeah, so we do need to reengage with cities on that topic. You know, the comp plan left it open, right? The comp plan didn't say what we were going to do once the Cedar Hills landfill closes. So we need to have those discussions with cities, so that there hasn't been a definite decision, are we doing incineration or waste export? One thing to note is if we're successful with zero waste of resources, that drops that tonnage amount a lot, so that may open up some other options besides just incineration and export. But, yeah, so I'd say it's still up in the air what we're going to do. Based on the comp plan analysis, I mean, the waste energy option was the most expensive is the one that we found. So that would likely increase rates quite a bit if that happens.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'm not seeing any more questions or comments, so Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. You had mentioned that several cities, a few cities had voiced their concern about this rate increase. Can you tell me why they voiced their concern about it?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few cities, you know, Kirkland was one of them. I think, I think some cities have already said that they're not going to increase their utility bills at all, right? And so we are a pass-through cost, and so there's some pressure on them that if we increase our rate, and they said we're not increasing our rate at all, then they need to find some cuts elsewhere, right? So I think that is one of the issues. And the other issue is just, again, I mean, we're in this unprecedented time with a lot of stress, financial stress, emotional stress. I think, you know, they're being responsive to that and trying to say, you know, let's help out with some of that stress by not increasing rates at all at this moment, so.
Okay, and you had mentioned it was forty, is it forty-six cents and sixty-five cents per month? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, and that's just an average of how we calculate what the average impact might be on your curbside bill. Every city has a different way they calculate their bill. I mean, in general, what haulers do is they have sort of a disposal fee, which, again, includes what we charge them to tip at our stations. But then they also have a different portion of the fee that's based on how big your can size is, which has nothing to do with our tipping fee. So I think it's really complicated. I mean, we sort of oversimplify it by just saying, you know, if our, like, let's, you know, if our tipping fee is a hundred dollars per ton, the average single family produces about sixty-five, point six-five tons a year. You divide that by twelve months, right? And then that's the curbside impact, basically. So it's sort of a rough estimate, a rough gauge of like how much our tipping fee could impact the curbside residential fee. Again, it's not a one-to-one relationship, and we'll never be able to get that because every single city has a different methodology for calculating that. But it's a close estimate.
Okay, well, I only ask that, I mean, I appreciate the presentation, I only ask that because it's important for us to actually know factually how it impacts our community. There's a lot of people struggling out there right now, and it's important that we just, you know, we make sure we put the proper facts out there on what things are going to cost. And so you were talking about capital projects. Can you, is there any capital projects that directly affect Muffel that may or may not be done if this does or does not pass?
I think likely that the Northeast Recycling Transfer Station. I mean, I don't know how many of your residents go down to Houghton versus Shoreline, but, you know, sort of equidistant, right? So that's the biggest one. I mean, you know, we're going, soon, we'll be going through a siting process of where that could be located. You know, it could be Kirkland, Redmond, Woodinville, Sonamish even. So if that gets delayed, again, it's just, Houghton doesn't include all recycling services, right? Like, you can't recycle yard waste there. So again, it's an old station, it's got a top loader, doesn't compact the waste. I mean, it's just old, and it needs to be replaced, so it would just delay opening of that station for folks.
Okay, and any of the capital projects that would be in this, would those capital projects be upgraded in the next biennial budget? So meaning that would you do something in this biennial budget and then turn around and do an additional capital project for the next one?
I mean, every two years, we revisit the capital program, right? And we see what the needs are. I would say for transfer stations, I mean, the two ones left are the South County one that I talked about, that's already in design phase, and then this Northeast one. The last one is just what do we do with Renton, and that needs to be a decision that we haven't even talked about what that looks like. Do we close it down? Do we upgrade it? What do we do there? And that's just kind of the third transfer station on the list, I guess, that needs to be talked about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you all very much for your presentation, packed with lots of information, especially timely with how it's so volatile right now. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So one of the outcomes of this conversation was to provide Councilmember McNeil with some voting direction. Councilmember McNeil, if you wanted to speak to that?
Yes, City Manager, thank you. I think in past previous committee updates, I spoke about some pretty robust conversations around the rate increases that I was hearing at SCA Pick. And what I would like to do is, you know, kind of get a position or at least some kind of support or lack of support for a rate increase and the effects it would have on our community. I'd like to take that back to Pick. We have a Pick meeting tomorrow, actually. So if I can, you know, if we can just all kind of weigh in on where we would be with that rate increase.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Zorn, want to start us off?
Doug, I was hoping I could go last. I'm crazy about a rate increase, but I, and I looked at the whole presentation with, you know, you know, a scrutinizing eye, and I don't know how we avoid it and still be able to provide a consistent, affordable service two or three years down the road without it. If we postpone a rate increase, it's going to hurt us in the long run. And so, as it stands now, I don't know if I say that I support it, but I'm not against it either. Does that make sense?
Yes, I guess I would follow up with that. I guess it would be, do you support a rate increase, yes or no? And then, would you support looking at another option as an alternative?
What would another option be? Have you guys talked about that?
They have the other options that they had in the presentation.
In the presentation? In the presentation? Well, we haul, we haul our, our, our own garbage, so I know that I'm going to hear about it every time my husband goes down to Houghton. Um, but by the same token, I think it's something that we can absorb, and, um, and we, we do our own yard waste anyway, you know, chip and compost. So, um, for my own personal end, we can manage it. If, for people who are getting curbside, if it's under, what did they say, a dollar, uh, billing? Anywhere from forty-some-odd cents to seventy-some-odd cents a billing? That's not a, a huge deal. There are, there are bigger things to absorb, to have to absorb in rate increases, and this is not one of them. So I guess in, in that respect, I do support it.
Councilmember Thompson.
I mean, I'd say that the upward pressure on pricing that they went over in the presentation is absolutely understandable, and it seems like they've taken every measure possible to mitigate that as much as they can. Um, nobody likes it when prices go up. Um, but on the bright side, it's because garbage going into a landfill is going down. Um, I mean, it, it seems very reasonable to me.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Well, I understand the, the issue. I think what bothers me the most is that people, just as you said, that don't need the service have to pay it anyway, and now everybody is trying to pay their bills, and I just haven't heard enough cuts from King County to assure me that this is the right direction. I need to hear what cuts they're making in all areas, because the people they're serving are all struggling to pay their bills.
Councilmember Dewar.
Um, I mean, I agree with the points made previously, but forty-six cents, I think we've got bigger issues coming up, um, than forty-six cents, so I'm in favor of raising the fee. Um, I think people will, I don't think people are gonna notice the forty-six cents, but, um, they would notice, um, you know, a higher rate any year from now, and, um, it just makes sense. It seems like the smart way to do things. They need to cut thirty-seven million dollars, so, um, I see that they've done what they could to cut costs.
Councilmember Agnew.
You know, I'd support option D. You know, I think right now during this time, we need to make as many concessions as we can for the people that are struggling financially. Uh, though a dollar may not be a much, uh, it may be a tipping point for some that are, uh, have limited incomes coming in, so I'd be for no increase at all.
And I'll weigh in, and I believe the, kind of the steady incremental increase over the biennium, uh, keeping the capital projects on track, uh, keeping those planned expenditures, uh, 'cause if we just delay the projects, they'll become more expensive and more challenging, uh, and also looking for citing that new facility in the future land, and will be just harder to find and more expensive to, uh, purchase. So I think, I definitely appreciate all the, the cuts they've made and the efficiencies they've realized, so I think they've really done their part to maintain costs and keep those increases as small as possible. So I, I would go with the, the six and the eight percent over the biennium.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think we, uh, we are, at this point, so I've got a majority supporting.
All right. All right, thank you. Onto our next, uh, City Manager update.
Thank you very much. Make sure that the Capitol can hear me. So I have two updates this evening. Um, I'll be doing a brief update on COVID-19 and the city's activities with, related to our response, and then also I'll be, um, presenting a statement with regards to the protests and the things that are happening across our nation, um, over the last couple of weeks. So first for the COVID-19 update, um, we are one of the unique cities in, uh, Washington State that are divided between two counties, and so half of our city is in Phase 1.5, and the other half is in Phase 2. Um, I, I know some folks who have been able to go to the hairdresser and to the nail salons, and, uh, we actually had lunch out on Tuesday in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell, so, uh, we're starting to, um, get back to our, our businesses, and our businesses are starting to get up and running, and that's certainly an exciting, uh, time for us, and we look forward to continuing to support our businesses as they do that. Um, in that vein, um, we're working on the closing of Main Street. That was a decision that council made last week, and the update is, uh, we will, our closing, uh, target date is June 15th. So by Thursday, you will start to see no parking signs on the block of Main Street between 101st and 102nd. Um, Transit will be rerouting their buses on Saturday, um, and then again, we'll work on, uh, bringing in the ecology blocks and closing that off on the 15th. We're also looking to add, um, trash cans because we recognize the number of people that are coming to the downtown, and, uh, at this point, um, trash, we're working very hard to keep up with the trash, working with Ecology who maintains those garbage cans, uh, but we're looking to add some, uh, if possible. Um, I did want to ask one question of the council in the item that I brought last week. I was very specific in, um, the area that we're looking at for closures and to allow businesses to use public right-of-way, and that use, we had recommended that there was no fees associated with that and another way to support our businesses. But we're doing everything so quickly, and we don't have the opportunity to really think things through, and one of the things that we realized was we should have added to that, um, agenda bill, uh, the authority to waive, um, use of right-of-way, um, permits, the fee for use of right-of-way permits for the whole downtown, so that businesses that can safely, um, use the right-of-way for additional outdoor chairs. And so, um, I'm just looking for nods from the council that you would support, that I would waive the fees for any businesses in the downtown that, um, are interested in, in, um, seeking permits to be able to use that right-of-way to expand their business.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I, I just a clarifying question. That's, that's for all of Main Street, right?
It would be Main Street and it would be Bothell Way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm seeing lots of, of, which is, which is what I assumed and I think was the spirit and intent, um, but I didn't want to overstep my bounds, um, and wanted to be sure that that's what, um, council expected and that, um, that the community knows how supportive you are of the businesses, um, and the things that we're trying to do to help them be successful. So I appreciate that clarification very much. Uh, some other positive news, Parks is working to begin to reopen restrooms, so you'll see Blythe and the Park at Bothell Landing and Cedar Grove restroom starting to open next week. Um, and even more exciting news for dog lovers, um, we will have our pop-up dog park back, and we are going to locate it back at its original first location at the Park at Bothell Landing, um, and we expect that to be up and running by the end of June. So, um, trying to do some really nice things for our community, bring people into the downtown safely, um, still can, uh, continue to encourage that social distancing, but the opportunity is to get back out, um, especially with our beloved dogs, and be able to, um, have the dog park back. So, um, something very positive, very excited that, that Parks is working on this and eager to see that happening. We are continuing our reopening, uh, work within the organization, so I shared with, I, I shared our progress with you, um, on, on that topic last week, and, and the magnitude of work that we're doing to be able to effectively and safely, um, start to return, um, some of our staff into the, um, into our buildings, and, um, outdoor staff, our public works crews and Parks crews are, are working almost full-time at this point, um, and we're looking to transition staff, um, effectively and slowly and safely back into the workplace, um, as feasible. Um, I think telecommuting may be, uh, part of our future for a while, which is, um, working effectively and certainly great for the environment as well. And a reminder, because of our furloughs, um, this will be our first Friday that City Hall will be closed, um, uh, well, it's technically still closed, um, but this will be our first Friday that, um, employees are furloughed as part of the ten percent furlough. Uh, we're working on our CARES Act, a funding distribution. Uh, that was something that council approved as well, and so we're looking, um, how we can effectively distribute the five hundred thousand that council, council's authorized for the community and our businesses. Um, and our business support, so we received, uh, the money from King County, and council authorized the reopening kits, and we're working to purchase all those, um, supplies for those kits. We're bringing volunteers in to assemble the kits, and then we'll have some sort of distribution event here on the plaza, so businesses can come and pick up their reopening kits. So we're very excited about all of that work. I can pause for questions if anybody has any questions. All right. So with regards to...
Deputy, oop, Deputy Mayor Zornz, she...
I missed the yellow card.
Sorry, just an aside, if you need volunteers for helping put the care packages together, they, let us know.
We will let the council know, and we're also hopeful that some council members can come down and be part of the distribution so that you can meet our businesses and see them and, and thank them for coming and, and wish them well and show them, um, our support. So we will let you know both opportunities as we get them scheduled. Thank you for asking.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
And thank you, Jeanie, I already been on chairs well.
Great. Okay, um, onto the next topic. So, uh, with regards to, um, the protests and, and the things that have been happening with, with our community, um, I really appreciated the leadership that the council showed at the last meeting, um, by making a statement, um, with regards to how the council feels about what's happening, and also taking a moment of silence for the death of, um, George Floyd. I would like to make a statement, I think that it's important that the community understand how this organization is led, um, why we are the way we are today and how we got to, um, where we are today, and, and so I just want to share some thoughts with you. It's hard to find the words at a time like this, but it is exactly times like this that we must not be silent, but instead find the right words. Our nation is in crisis and in mourning as we grapple with another senseless death of an African-American. I remember like it was yesterday, sitting in my living room twenty-eight years ago, watching the events unfold in LA around the beating of Rodney King by LA police officers, and the subsequent riots following acquittal of those officers. How is it possible we, as a nation, have made so little progress towards ending racism in nearly three decades? Major trauma causes us to reassess our values and actions, and I found myself reflecting upon my own past and what things influenced me to become the person and the leader I am today. I am a first-generation American. At the end of World War II, my grandmother put my father, at the age of sixteen, alone on a boat to America to live with a family he did not know in search of a better life. After high school, he proudly became an American citizen and joined the Army and went to school and went to college in America. My childhood was far easier than his, but I still experienced times of struggle as I was cruelly teased from my heritage. In the workplace, I've experienced gender bias, bullying by bosses and colleagues, and harassment. As emotionally challenging as these struggles are for me, I realize they pale in comparison to what so many in our nation have faced or face on a daily basis. For me, the, for me, these experiences impacted me, and I used them to develop my personal values of how I treat people and hope to be treated in return. As a leader, I carry the responsibility of instilling values into an organization that ensure all who work with us embrace and live by meaningful values so that we can be transparent, inclusive, and compassionate, a city for our community. My leadership values are a product of my experiences and a desire to create a work environment that fosters productivity, inclusiveness, tolerance, and respect. The City of Bothell holds dear our five values, which are exceptional customer service, teamwork, safety, innovation, and ethics. Together, over the past three and a half years, we have worked side-by-side building a foundation of trust, equity, and compassion in our organization based on our commitment to these values. We practice good intentions, which means we come from, from, we come from and trust that others are coming from a place of good intentions, not from a place of criticism or trying to put someone down. By doing so, we can respond to conflict without fear, which makes us less defensive and more able to speak freely and resolve differences. I want to share our values to show our community that we hold each of you in the highest regard, respect our diversity, and are striving every day to ensure every member of our community feels safe, respected, and at home in Bothell. The first is exceptional customer service, which means respecting our community and each other, taking the extra step to make each person feel that we understand what they're going through and want their experience with us to exceed their expectations. Teamwork means we respect each other by embracing open and honest conversations so conflict and differences can be shared and resolved. It also requires that all team members are treated with dignity and respect. Safety is about feeling not just physically safe, but also emotionally safe in the workplace. A safe workplace is one where every team member feels accepted and is able to come forward and discuss difficult topics like harassment, bias, bullying, or abuse, free from retaliation. Innovation empowers our team to seek out ways to improve processes, create new programs, and look through different lenses to improve our ability to be an inclusive and welcoming community for all. Ethics requires us to give up the notion that an act is proper simply because it is legal or permissible. Ethics in the workplace means we go beyond our policies and procedures, allowing our morality to guide our decision-making. We strive to do the right thing. These values guide us every day, push us to grow and learn and be better people and public servants. We are deeply saddened by the senseless, senseless death of George Floyd and so many others before him that were killed or injured at incidents involving law enforcement officers. Racism and ignorance cannot be tolerated. Two years ago, we formed the Diversity Inclusion Committee to help guide our work and decisions, seek our, seek opportunities to improve practices, and foster a dialogue about the value of a diverse workforce and community. We are eager to engage in our diversity training, training which was planned for early 2020, but has been delayed until this fall due to the pandemic. We must find ways to stop violence and racial injustice in our nation. This can start with us, right here in Bothell, right now. We are an exceptional community with, that values human rights, fairness, equity, and diversity. I believe Bothell PD is one of the finest police agencies with ethical and compassionate leadership, and I remain supportive of the men and women who serve our community. Our approach to community policing and leadership is, in, in launching the Navigator Program, which pairs police officers with mental health professionals to offer our community support and guidance to, to connect to a wide variety of social programs, are examples of how we compassionately serve our community. We can and want to do better. We are eager to talk to our community, hear ideas, and learn how we can do better. As your City Manager, I am committed to learning from you so together we can ensure Bothell is safe and welcoming to all. In the, in the last few weeks, we have had, we have been, there has been a lot of honest conversation happening between our officers and residents, protesters, and organizers. The Chief of Police has personally called many community, many community members who have contacted him with questions. By this Friday, Bothell PD will have posted on their website responses to the community's most frequently asked questions during these past two weeks. Next week, Chief Suberlik will attend the City Council meeting to share some of that dialogue and also respond publicly to the, publicly to the questions the community's been asking about Bothell PD and law enforcement. The Chief is also with us, um, right now as I'm making the statement. Um, he would also like to share some information about, um, our peaceful protests that we had over the last couple of weeks, um, and some additional information, um, to support our community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to share, um, this information and, and my thoughts and feelings with you and the community. Chief, if you would like to, to share some thoughts?
Perfect. Uh, thank you, City Manager. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members. I am Ken Strickland, Chief of Police for the City of Bothell. I wanted to provide you a, a quick briefing on the events that have unfolded since we last met, uh, last week. Since we met, uh, last Thursday, we had a peaceful demonstration of approximately five-hundred people along Bothell Way from Popkin Field down to the, uh, intersection of 522. Uh, again, the demonstration lasted about three and a half hours, uh, I had a handful of officers down there with me where we mingled with the crowd to answer questions and provide ice water to those in attendance. On Saturday, we had two other demonstrations, again, both were very peaceful and well-attended. The first demonstration was a fun run which began at the Bothell United Methodist Church, and I had command staff up there to engage with the, uh, the individuals that were, uh, running to ensure that there's safety along the route. As it is, we, we don't have a permit process for closing down roads, so we wanted to ensure that nobody was in danger along the busy roadways. Again, at that event, we have approximately three hundred participants. The second demonstration was again at the intersection of Bothell Way in State Route 522, again, approximately three... Again, approximately 300 demonstrators were in attendance, and again, it was very peaceful. Over the past week, as the city manager mentioned, I, along with many of you, have received comments and questions from people, frankly, from around the globe, wanting to know our policies, procedures, budget, and practices. As a result, I've spoken to a number of people, as the city manager said, I know you have as well. I've spent the past few days working with my command staff in an effort to update our webpage in hopes of being able to more broadly answer the questions the community has. It is my goal, in addition to that, to also continue to reach out to our community via phone and in person as much as I can to answer the questions that have come in. In closing, I'd like to say how proud I am to work in and for this community. Our demonstrators have been peaceful, respectful, and attended by people who care. I'd also like to add that my officers care for and work very hard to protect those who live, work, play, or are just traveling through our city. We look forward to working with our community to ensure that we're providing the level of service and caring that our residents expect and desire. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I think I may have cut in line of, remember Agnew, because I think I, yeah, I raised a, raised his little point earlier. I'll pop that. City manager and Chief Suberlich, thank you for making your comments. Chief Suberlich, I, I, you're, one, I'm struck by your leadership, but I'm also struck at the same time that you are, that you embody the core of our police department, that every officer that I have met carries the same spirit that you do, and I'm, I'm very, very appreciative of, of the guardianship that you, that you give Bothell. And as I was sitting here thinking, and it's just a really brief aside, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I think why, I suspect why people are so concerned about police is the level of trust that we, that we place on you, that, that, that when that trust is broken by someone, someone who brings dishonor to what you're doing and disgraces what the profession as a whole, that's, that's very hard. And we, as a community and nation, have to deal with that. But also, I'm, cannot remember his last name, Ahmed? Is it Armand? Who was, I think, I think we also have to make sure that we check and we look in the mirror ourselves because there was a gentleman who was killed shortly before, just looking out for a run. It was not something the police did. It was some, somebody in the public did. And he was out for a run, and he was enjoying doing what we all are probably have been guilty of at some point, and that's looking at a new construction. So as, as, as a community, as we evaluate and we, and we place high expectations on our police, I think we also need to be placing high expectations on ourselves. Are, are we also reflecting what we are asking of them? And that's all I wanted to add. And thank, and thank you again for making the comments that you made.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'd like to thank the city man, and the chief for their comments. I, I've lived here about 38 years. I have all the confidence and faith in our police department. We have a very professional, caring department. We, we seem to be a city of inclusion, or that's what we say, anyway. I was at one of the demonstrations with Councilmember McNeil, and I was just wondering, why don't we show it a little bit more? Why don't we take a day and the employees of the City of Bothell go to the corner, take a knee, pick up a sign, and, and tell people that we are tired of all this too? That we need to make a change, and we're going to make a change here? Just food for thought, but, but I bet we could do that. And, and it would, what would that say to the community? That we care as much as they do?
If I may, just real quick, I, I agree with you. I, we, the officers that serve and protect this community recognize the injustices that have occurred throughout our history, and they are absolutely appalled by Mr. Floyd's death. And I think I've seen a number of you out and about while the demonstrations have been going on and participating in that. You know, we, we definitely care, and I, I think it's important for the people of our community to know we're not on different sides. We are on the same side.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, and I really appreciate what you just said because I was trying to think about what we could do as a city council that would be important for our community. And Kelsner Agnew, I, I agree with you. I think we should, we should meet at a certain time. We should kneel, and we should make a presentation about how much we care about what our people are doing and, and be a leader in this. So I thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Doerr.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to thank the chief. I forwarded a lot of emails to him this week, and one of the things I think is important for the community to understand is how progressive our police department has been. We were at the forefront of the Navigator Program, which is the program whereby we send out mental health experts to deal with issues that really don't need to be police-related. And I think it's important the community to understand that as well. I, I knew that we did the escalation training. What I didn't know was that we also do training around crisis intervention, extreme risk protection orders, implicit bias, history of rates in policing, and alternatives to arrest. And I, I think a lot of the emails that we've received this week were, were about, you know, what, what kind of police department we have. And I think a lot of people don't, don't know what kind of police department we have. And I wasn't even aware of all the progressive things that we're doing to be more of a community policing department rather than kind of an enforcement agency. And so I really appreciate that we've done these things and that we're more progressive. So thank you, chief, for educating me more about what our police department does.
Thank you. I, I would like to add, you know, we recognize we're not perfect. We're humans, and we make mistakes. I've been doing this a long time, 30 years. Law enforcement's changed a lot over the years. So we continually strive to make improvements, and that's one of the reasons why we're an accredited agency and attend the trainings that you discussed.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, mayor. Chief, just to, wanted to say two things. As I've been out in the crowd this week, I've really appreciated the posture of the police that were out there, serving water away from the action there to help if needed. And I'm also really excited to hear about the website that we're working on to try to communicate answers to some of the, the very pointed questions that we're getting from the community right now. I believe that pointed questions deserve straight answers, and I'm looking forward to seeing what those answers look like on Friday.
Yes, and I, I'd like to add, one of the things we're trying to do is also post our policy and procedure manual online. It, it has never been posted online at this point, but I, I will just say I'm not real tech savvy. So I've been working with our IS and other members of our city to kind of help me along so we can get those things up there on the website so our, our community can see what we do.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, mayor. I guess I wanted to start off by thanking the city manager for her comments and sharing her story. That means a lot. This past few weeks have, have been, have flooded back quite a few memories for me. But hearing these stories, we all have different stories to tell. Doesn't matter your background, where you come from, each and every one of us has a story. It doesn't matter, matter if you're a man or a woman, if you're a child. We all come from different backgrounds, and we all have different experiences. And the one thing that I can tell you that I take solace in is the fact that we're having conversations finally. And to me, to hear the city manager share her story, standing out on the street corner with the chief and my two young sons, that's a pretty powerful message for our community. Wasn't, wasn't too many years ago, chief, that, you know, and I shared my story with you, that I didn't feel welcome. And today, we've changed that. So as a, as a black man, a person of color, being the first African-American city council member for the City of Bothell, I am encouraged where we're going and how far we've come. And I will say it loud and proud that I am extremely proud of our police department. I had the opportunity to work with Chief Cummings and see firsthand all the wonderful things and hear from all the department chiefs across the region and the things that she was implementing. And the stuff that you're doing now is, you're leading the way, chief, and you should be proud of what you're doing in your department, of what they're doing. You know, I had the opportunity to be out this weekend and hear a lot of negative talk and about the police department, and I will, and not our police department, but just policing in general. And I will tell you, we, we need to have police officers. There's good and bad on both sides of everything. But we need to ensure that we have public safety. We need to ensure that, you know, if, if a person is going through a crisis, that they have opportunities to get the help that they need. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing in, in Bothell. You know, we passed a public safety levy not too long ago, and our community spoke. They wanted public safety, and we have it. The run that we talked about earlier that happened at the Methodist Church, to have 300 people come out there and stand on that corner, do that run, and then to have another 200 come down downtown Bothell, Councilmember Agnew and I were sitting out there on the street corner with, I've never seen anything like that ever in my life. And I'm 54 and I've been here my whole life. So I want there to always be a message of hope. I want there to be a message of listening to one another. And as long as we can continue to do that, as long as we can continue to listen with an open ear to one another, it doesn't matter where we come from, we will get to the finish line. And so I applaud you, and I thank you for making the city safe and welcoming for my family and the 47,000 people that live here, and hopefully the communities around us will take note and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I will tell you that I was honored that you shared as much of your life story with me as you did when you were out there on the street. As a 50-something-year-old man, it's heartbreaking to, to imagine having to talk to your children about being treated differently, whether you go into a store and stop after an officer. And I don't take that lightly. We, we, as a nation, need to make change, and I'm committed to making that change here.
City manager, chief, thank you both for your comments. I think our entire city council has just been reflecting on what a great community, what great city staff that we have. I think it's a testament to how we've had many protests, but they've remained peaceful. We're doing celebratory fun runs for this. We can come together in multiple different ways, and it always remains peaceful. As a response to some of my responses to people, people would come back and tell me of their positive comments or their, their conversations that they had with the chief or other police out in the, out on the corners during protests. So I mean, it, it moved them enough to send another email. I mean, usually people are quick to send emails when they're mad or want to complain, but it takes much more effort when they want to compliment and have something good to say. So it's, that's how much it moved them, that they wanted to congratulate and remark on what special police that we have in Bothell. So thank you for being out there and setting an example and being visible and just available to our community.
Thank you, sir. And in closing, I can't say enough about the men and women of the Bothell Police Department. They are as committed as I am to helping serve in our community and, and making change. We're, we're not satisfied with just the status quo. We, we constantly want to move the ball forward, and that comes with interacting with, you know, our city council and our, our, our community leaders and our residents. So we look forward to this and the change that will come.
All right. Thank you for all of that. We'll move back to our agenda items here. So we have a council committee reports. Does anyone have a report they would like to make? All right, seeing none. City clerk, on to visitor comments. Do we have any?
We did receive one from Laura Escudé of the Bothell Library Board. She wanted to call in for her three minutes. Mrs. Escudé, are you on the line?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Musso Escudé from the Bothell Library Advisory Board Chair. And I am here to thank you all of you, as well as for the city staff, for your services during this challenging and novel times. And the city staff, they're all in our thoughts through the hard times up to come. I commend all of you, your hard work and dedication, working for the City of Bothell residents, keeping city services, and our safety. As the chair of the Bothell Library Advisory Board, I would like to announce that the board is resuming the first virtual meeting next Thursday, 16:00 AM. And we hope to have the executive director, Ms. Lisa Rosenbaum, the King County Library Assistant, to provide us some updates for the upcoming path to reopening. So we will have the opportunity as the board members, hopefully some residents will attend virtually, of course, feedback from the Bothell community as the King County Library System is moving to reopening. Also, we'd like to let all know that the board members, we are continuing our efforts in the community, networking, answering questions through not only our neighbors while they're passing by, but also through organizations, how the King County Library Service is serving to our community, such as schools, the Senior Center, Alicia Burnett Adult Center, North Shore Wranglers, ARCO King County Members, among others. So please, I would like to take the opportunity to, do not hesitate to contact us if you have questions, concerns, and comments to help you to serve this community through outreach through the library service, ensuring that their services are reached to communities ensuring the goals of the city, inclusion, diversity, equal services. So as we all know, the library has become an important hub in our community. And hopefully, we can go back again to host virtually, of course, some of the city councils and services, again, through the King County Library. Thank you for the opportunity to share and for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I brought my red Sharpie today so I could mark up my agenda here that we should take a break. Just because we're, we're not on the dais and we're probably at less than the best sitting situations at home. So let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 7:40. All right, welcome back. So, next item on our agenda is AB 20-072, consideration of interim ordinance allowing temporary reduced parking for outdoor dining. So, we have Community Direct Development Director Mike Kaderman with his item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So, I have a brief presentation for you this evening. I've done this often enough now, I can do it a little more seamlessly. So, this is the interim ordinance, uh, that we're talking about this evening, similar to the one that you passed back in April, uh, in terms of how that would work. This one is dealing with the temporary use of private parking for outdoor dining. So, our purpose and intent of this is really to help our eating and drinking establishments as they reopen into Phase Two and Phase 1.5, uh, that we're doing in King County, uh, to allow temporary use of the private parking areas that, uh, many of them have. That would help to offset some of the limits that they're going to be facing as part of the reopening. So, there are specific limitations on the capacity, uh, in those different phases, um, until we get to Phase Four. And then also looking at creating a minimal permit process and requirements in order to make this happen as quickly as possible. So, the interim ordinance, as under state law, is effective for six months. Uh, because we're doing this as an interim ordinance, we are not holding a public hearing this evening, but we will need to hold one within 60 days of the adoption of the ordinance. Uh, and we will schedule that, um, appropriately. Uh, the council can repeal this at any time, either before or after that public hearing. Uh, it only takes a motion and an affirmative vote of the council in order to, um, to basically repeal the interim ordinance. I would point out that all of this has been drafted in real time. Um, as the city manager has talked about, we are trying to respond as quickly and nimbly as we can. Just to give you an idea, um, Darcy Ayler, the Deputy City Attorney, finished drafting this interim ordinance last Thursday. The rules changed on us on Friday. So, we are doing our best to respond to a, a moving target and still make this work. We, uh, the effective date of this is approximately next Monday. It's, uh, five days after publication, so we'll work with the city clerk to, uh, make sure that we get a firm date on that. Uh, but we will take applications prior to that. We'll be prepared to accept applications beginning tomorrow if the council adopts this. Uh, but this gives us a little bit of time to prepare for the, uh, the actual issuance of those permits and also gives the, the restaurants the time, frankly, to, to do the setup that they need to do to make this happen as well. So, what the interim ordinance does basically is it waives parking requirements for our eating and drinking establishments. We have certain minimums that we require in different zones within the city. This would apply citywide and basically waive those requirements, uh, through Phases Two and Three of, uh, of the reopening, uh, approach. If they don't own the property, obviously, they would need to get the permission of the property owner. In some cases, they may be part of a, of a shopping center, a larger, um, parcel, uh, so they would need the, the permission of the owner of the property in order to use the parking areas. Uh, but that would be up to them to do that. That is not something that the city would regulate. The city also has no authority to regulate other agencies and their requirements. So, the Liquor Cannabis Board, for example, the Health Department, uh, there are requirements that they'll have to meet in order to, uh, to abide by those regulations. Uh, we can't waive those and we have no authority over those. So, we will work with them if there is a conflict that's created as a result of those regulations. Um, but, uh, but we're just dealing with the part that we have the authority over. And one of the things that we'll make, that we are responsible for, we'll make sure that, uh, we maintain are the Americans with Disabilities Act access requirements, uh, in the outdoor seating area as well as continued access for the building. We're going to use a new permit procedure on this in order to minimize the amount of time and effort involved on the part of the applicant as well as the part of city staff. So, this is one that, uh, is called a subject to field inspection. Uh, basically, they will submit an application, we'll give them a checklist and say, these are the things that you will need to do and be able to demonstrate when the inspector comes out and, uh, and checks the, uh, the setup to make sure that it's complying with the requirements of the interim ordinance. Uh, and then they would schedule that and the inspector would go out and sign off and give them the permit. So, it would be fairly straightforward and simple. We tried to make it as, as simple and straightforward for everyone involved. So, really, two questions for the council this evening. One is whether to approve the ordinance that would temporarily waive these requirements and allow the private parking areas to be used for outdoor dining. Uh, the second is if the council adopts that, whether to waive the fee that would be associated with the permit. Uh, if there is a canopy, there are actually two permits that would be involved. One, the new one that we're creating for this. The second is a permit that exists right now and it's through the, uh, for our fire department and the fire marshal. And so, we would consolidate those if they, if they use a, a canopy. Uh, but we would be asking the council and recommending that the council adopt this ordinance and waive those particular fees during this particular interim ordinance period. With that, if you have to answer any questions, um, then certainly open it up for any council deliberation or discussion. And we are recommending that the council adopt the ordinance, including the waiver of the permit fees.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Okay, so, I, I just want to confirm, are recommending waiving both of the fees?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I was thinking, you know, keep the canopy fee. I was going to ask you about that, but if you think that we can handle waiving both of them, then, then I'll go with that. Thank you.
We have had discussions with the fire marshal and we believe, given the number of these that we'll probably get, um, and the, the, um, the, the quick turnaround that we're, that we're proposing to do with the minimal application, that, uh, we can absorb those fees. There is an, an additional fee, an inspection fee, if they inspect outside of regular work hours, so if it's evenings or Saturdays, and we are not waiving that fee.
Okay, good. 'Cause, because that, I, I thought that was a reasonable fee to keep. My opinion was that was a reasonable fee to keep, so, thank you for that. Um, and, and since I have the floor for, for this moment, um, I wanted to thank you for how thoughtfully this came together in such a crunch time. It's very, very well done. And, um, I, uh, my notes were, uh, the meeting of safety and accessibility, including encouraging to, encouraging them to work with their business neighbors that are next to them. So, you thought of everything and I appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We've got, we've got, as we have time to do.
You, you covered, you covered, uh, you covered more than, um, than I had initially, had initially thought when we were covering this. Um, I think you thought of every detail and I'm hoping that some of the CARES Act down the road will help us compensate for, um, revenue lost. And if we can save these businesses long-term because of this action, it is, you know, we, that's a gain for us, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Our focus is really on doing what we can to help the businesses as they reopen. Uh, based on our understanding so far, at least, of the CARES Act, we don't believe we'll be able to get reimbursement for the lost revenue. But there may be some programs in the future that would be eligible and we'll certainly look into those. Um, and I, I appreciate your comment about the thoughtfulness of this and, and I do want to give credit where credit is due. This took, uh, some real quick work on the part of, um, the building official, um, the fire marshal, um, and our deputy city attorney. So, we put our heads together and, and several of my staff as well and made this come together quickly.
Well, you did good teamwork there.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the work you're doing, given the number of people that are really doing this work. It's a reduced staff and you're, you're responding to the community needs. I will tell you, every restaurant I've talked to, um, The Cottage, Chick-fil-A, different ones that have a parking lot need, they're very appreciative. And the speed of which you are allowing them to request a permit and to move forward is exceptional. So, I want to tell you, thank you so much. Be you luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I'm sorry I did that thing. Um, I, um, I just have one question. Um, are people going to be able to apply for the permit immediately or will they have to wait for the 15th to even apply for it? Like, is this something they can get handled and be ready to go on the 15th?
We are, we're ready to accept applications tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We won't be able to, we won't be able to do anything a- as far as going out and inspecting until the ordinance is effective. And we estimate that'll be early next week, so, but we can certainly start the process. We're assuming they're going to need some time to, to set everything up. Um, in any case, and that gives them time to set up, gives us time to work out any other rules that we may have in the process.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for your quick turnaround on this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, thank you very much for the, the fast and double work that you did on this. Um, I had a question. Um, do you know a Do you know approximately how many businesses you think might apply for this?
We really don't have an estimate, Councilmember. It doesn't apply pretty wide, so it will certainly broaden the potential use of this to a lot of different restaurants throughout the city. I think it'll depend a lot on their individual circumstances, on how to control their parking area, how many other businesses may want to take advantage of that, how open is the property owner, the center owner, to the use of those parking areas. Our approach, our assumption is that the parking will be underutilized because the business is going to be under capacity for the first couple of phases. So in theory, at least, there should be a trade-off of the amount of parking that they would normally need and the amount of parking that they would use for the outdoor seating. So we're hoping that there's, that a lot of restaurants take advantage of this or are able to take advantage of this.
Yeah, once again, just want to say thank you. I mean, it's amazing work that you did. The thing that I take away from this the most is the fact that it helps all of our business across our entire community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to be redundant, but thanks to staff for the flexibility and the quick pace and turnaround of this ordinance. I just wanted to weigh in, yes, on the ordinance and waiving a fee. So I would go with the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew.
Just to be redundant, nice of you. Your group did a wonderful job putting this together in a short amount of time. If I like, Councilmember, we'll support.
Thank you.
And I as well, amazed by how nimble and quick you have been with this, just responding to this and staying up on the moving goalposts that we have, just with all these changing orders. So I too am in favor of the recommended action. So it looks like we'll still need a motion. So, so, all right, Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the recommended action.
Councilmember McNeil.
I second, Councilmember McNeil, I second the action.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar and a second by Councilmember McNeil for the, let me see where the recommended action is. All right, so the recommended action is provide direction staff. All right, so it's a interim ordinance allowing temporary reduced parking for outdoor dining, so any discussion? Oh, let me get back. All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
McAuliffe, yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
McNeil, yea.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yea.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Passes seven zero.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Director Kaderman.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, on to our next item, 20-073, consideration of the redeployment of Lime scooters in Bothell. So we have Economic Development Manager, Jeanie Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. I am here this evening to ask for your guidance and the consideration of the redeployment of Lime scooters. So as you recall, a year ago, you approved a 90-day pilot program for motorized foot scooters in the city of Bothell. Staff issued a temporary public area use permit to Lime, a micro-mobility shared scooter business. And on July 19th, the company launched 100 scooters in the city of Bothell. During that 90-day program, staff received comments and feedback from the public as well as monthly reports from Lime. At the end of that 90-day program, we came back to council, and council approved an extension to allow staff the time needed to create a permanent micro-mobility program for council's consideration. In October of 2019, due to bad weather, the Lime scooter removed all of their scooters in the city of Bothell. It's not uncommon for them to do that in smaller cities during the winter. This past March, they brought their scooters back for a very, very short period of time. And on March 16th, I received an email from Lime stating that in response to COVID-19 and in an abundance of caution, they would be temporarily pausing operations and remove its scooters from Bothell within 36 hours, which they did. The company is now requesting that we allow them to resume operations in Bothell as soon as possible, and it would be the deployment of 100 scooters. So Lime reports that they have operated their bike share and scooter share business throughout the United States in larger communities like Austin, Baltimore, Los Angeles, and San Francisco, with no coronavirus transmission traced to their use. And just for your information, Seattle has allowed ongoing operations of bike share programs during the pandemic. So as you know, the intent of multimodal forms of transportation is to encourage the use of public transportation. Scooters located near bus stops are used for the last mile home. And then also, too, scooters in very dense populations, urban communities, are super-popular. In Bothell, the scooters have primarily been used for recreation and by university students. And I'd like to remind you that UW Bothell and Cascadia will be operating mostly online through fall. So staff has not completed a formal right-of-way use permit process, which would officially allow and charge bike share and scooter share companies to use other right-of-ways for staging their equipment. It is anticipated we would have that to, have that before council and late fall, 2020. So my question for you is, I'm asking for your direction regarding the redeployment of electric scooters in the city of Bothell.
All right, who'd like Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Real quick, yes, I'm bringing them back, and I'm looking forward to looking at the right-of-way permit this fall.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Councilmember McAuliffe, please unmute your mic.
Sorry. Thank you. I like the whole description of how they would be clean and disinfect their scooters. And I think this is a very nice alternative way for our young people to get around town and reduce noise, so I support this.
Councilmember Agnew.
I do also support this, but I just wanted to mention to Councilmember McAuliffe that old people like using scooters.
Councilmember Thompson.
I too will be supporting this, and can I just say, it's nice to have, like, some tiny semblance of normalcy come back? Like, even though it's just a little one, I'm all in for this.
All right. Yeah, I too will support this. I think with, you know, you hear stories of shortages or people having trouble finding bicycles, so I think this is another additional way of people could get out and just have some fun out on the roads, just in this time when there is less traffic, and it's good to get out and do something. So, all right, Councilmember Dewar.
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
All right, so we have Councilmember Dewar with the motion, and Councilmember Thompson to approve the redeployment of Lime scooters. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Please state yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we look like we'll just take another quick break. Here, we have the study session coming up afterwards, so just want to give people a chance to stand up, get any refreshments that they need before we come back and talk about the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. All right, it's 8:01, we'll come back at 8:10. All right, welcome back. And we will be working, moving on to AB twenty dash zero seven four, Status of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. So we have Director, Development Director Kaderman with us.
Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My pleasure tonight to introduce Bruce Blackburn, Senior Planner with the City of Buffalo staff, and Rachel Miller, who's a Senior Associate with Makers Architecture and Urban Design. Rachel and her firm have been on the project for one year and a half now, Rachel?
That's right.
Yeah. So, a lot of good work has been done the last year and a half, and obviously Bruce has been heavily involved in that. I should also note this is not Bruce's last meeting. He still has more work to go, and we're going to squeeze everything out of him that we can between now and about a month from now when he, when he retires. Last week, Bruce, I think, set a personal record and did a presentation in less than three and a half minutes. And I tried to turn it down to three and a half minutes tonight, but we couldn't quite get there. It's a little bit longer than that. So we have built in some specific stop points in the presentation to allow the council to ask questions. So I will, at those points, I'll take the presentation down, and if you can hold your questions until those breakpoints, that would be helpful in terms of the flow of the presentation as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce, and we'll start the presentation as soon as I can pull it up here. And I should also mention, we're not asking for any specific direction from the council this evening, but certainly if you have any, any questions or concerns as we're going along, we want to hear about those. So with that, Bruce?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm glad to be able to make this presentation tonight. I will note that after thirty-three years, I'm still last on the agenda, so nothing much has changed. Next slide, please. As Director Kaderman has identified, we're not asking for any directions tonight or any action specifically. President, we're going to have a presentation by me and Rachel Miller of Makers Architecture, who is the consultant lead for this process. And afterwards, we want to have some council questions or comments as we go through the presentation. So please, we'll do that with those certain breakpoints, and that will work very well for it. So next slide, please. First of all, why this effort? This is to retain the Regional Growth Center designation for Canyon Park. The Figueroa Sound Regional Council issued new regional growth standard criteria. We got to update our subarea plan, the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, to be consistent with those provisions and those new criteria. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights of the new criteria involve a minimum activity units. Now, an activity unit is a person or people, and it's either an employee or a resident. It can be either one. We have to meet a certain number of existing and planned activity units within our subarea. We have to have a certain mix of land uses. We also have to meet a SoMish County population growth target. Now, right now, we've got about twelve thousand activity units or people within the RGC. We need to plan for more new residents and employees to meet these new AU per acre of minimums. Next slide, please. I just want to mention briefly the public engagement effort we have gone through underneath this entire process. We started this back in, in two thousand and seventeen, and we have had a lot of different discussions, meetings, virtual, online items. I just want to make sure everybody understands that we have gone beyond and anything I've ever experienced before for our public engagement. Next slide, please. Certainly, we have a vision, and this is one of the things that we've done over the years. And that vision is pretty straightforward, but it's very powerful. It's to be an economic driver, a multifaceted neighborhood, connected to the natural environment, and to be a transportation hub. This is a vision that has been carrying us through this entire process. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Miller to go through the Planning Commission's recommended preferred land use alternative, which we received from the commission on March the fourth. Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Bruce. And thank you, Mayor, and City Council members for having us here. It has been a really exciting project, and really nice to work with Bruce. So glad, glad I got that chance to work with you before you retire. As Bruce mentioned, this has been a lot of work over the last year, year and plus. And what you see in front of you is what the Planning Commission recommended, the preferred alternative heading forward. I'll talk a lot more about what these land uses are, but what I want you to notice is that we're showing two nodes right here. One up north around Thrasher's Corner and one south around I four oh five. And these are based on the expected high-capacity transit or bus rapid transit, the Green Line, Swift Green Line running along Buffalo Hubbard Highway, and the future sound transit, I four oh five, bus rapid transit on I four oh five. Next slide, please. So here's the big concepts that the Planning Commission got behind. Down by I four oh five, this is the area that we see really changing and becoming that vision that all of this community engagement and work with stakeholders led to. So around I four oh five, and where that, both the Green Line would stop at the park and ride and the I four oh five flyover stop, which begins around twenty, twenty-five, around that area is where we would see the most change. And emphasizing this transit-oriented development and higher intensity uses next to where great transit is, is expected. And that Canyon Park Place node, where the PCC is, and a number of other retail and shopping areas, adding, really seeing that area become a neighborhood center, connected to the neighborhoods to the south. The current park and ride to the north, we see as a huge opportunity, some kind of public-private partnership to redevelop that with a great transit-oriented development, a multi-story building that includes the parking, but then also something that creates an active use that's safe and comfortable for pedestrians who are on that flyover stop getting into the current business park. Moving up north, that seventeen thousand node is expected to be where we get the mix of uses that really helps the employment center become more of a twenty-four-hour neighborhood and attracts the talents and types of workers that might really enjoy working in, in a twenty-four-hour neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood at the major employment center there. At east, so these yellow lines that you see here are the major pedestrian bicycle routes from transit into the more center-type areas. And that east-west street that crosses over North Creek and North Creek Trail and has a green star on it is expected to be the major pedestrian route into the business park. And we could see it becoming kind of a main street, or at least more active, and really, again, emphasizing the level of comfort for pedestrians and safety. This concept really makes use of North Creek as an amenity, and so using that North Creek Trail and emphasizing the recreational opportunities there and the opportunities to get to the larger parks in the system. And then, when you get to the northern area, up at Thrasher's Corner, this is a longer-term vision. And as just letting it be what it is now, it's working very well with Fred Meyer and as a retail area. And so just as opportunities emerge, let it infill and become a great neighborhood center there that serves the neighborhoods farther to the north. And then, right in the middle, just, there is already a proposal for that site where it's, where it's pointing to residential as proposed, letting that go forward. And then farther to the east, where this purple fades out and also on the west, this is really the employment center that Bruce has mentioned, and the amazing life sciences and incredible work that's happening there, just maintaining the flexibility that's brought it to what it is today and letting that go forward. Next slide, please. So what's pretty amazing about this preferred alternative is that it meets all of the PSRC criteria. You would not believe the hoops we've had to go through to make this all work. So it, it meets that forty-five activity units per acre. It's got the right-size boundary to make that work. It's got a great land use mix that reduces trips generated, and the transportation options are really supporting this, the, the land use mix. And the market feasibility is actually there. I'll talk about that more after the break. But we, we know that we're in a tough spot right now, and that the idea of being patient and that there is the likelihood that this will happen as envisioned, as long as we are patient and don't change course just because of short-term trends. Okay, next slide. Anything you want to add, Bruce?
I, I just want to identify again that we really put a lot, major focus on retaining the employment center out there. That was a real key item we learned with our public engagement. So I just want to emphasize that is an option. But ready for some questions that anybody might have? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorns?
I've been at a lot of the, the meetings, or I have been a stalker by watching Planning Commission from the comfort of my own home. So I, I have a, a good feel for all the labor that's gone into this. Do you want us to ask, shoot our wad of questions right now? I only have a couple. I saw some, Bill, Bruce, I see you shaking your head like, oh, no. I remember seeing a discussion about a possible transit, creating a transit cut-through off of Maltby down the backside of it. Was it Fred Meyer? The way that it's structured, do you still leave that option open as, you know, down the road? If that looks like something that's feasible, it can be done?
Yeah, that's a really important transportation project that is serving an important function. And we will talk more about transportation later. So maybe we should give a heads up on all the topics that are coming up.
I just, okay.
So just so everybody's aware, the next thing is land use designations, and then we'll talk about market, and then we'll talk about transportation. Is that everything we've got, Bruce?
That's it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, so at some point, maybe you made, you could, if you could, if, if it's not down the road for your land use, you know, you answer it now, or maybe you can address it then, is, I, I remember there was discussion of how close to put residential to busy streets.
Hmm.
And so I'm kind of curious of what the final call was on that versus putting employment right up against really busy, noisy streets.
Yes, great question. I'll, I'll go ahead and talk about it now. We have talked about a five-hundred-foot buffer around the roadway center lines around I four oh five. It meets the threshold that California uses for that same standard, based on the average daily traffic on I four oh five. And what California does is they do not allow sensitive uses within that five-hundred-foot buffer. And so that means residences, daycare, schools, anything where asthma, especially in kids, would be a concern. So what would be allowed in there is any commercial uses, so office and retail, tech, light industrial, very, even very intense office developments. So you still could have a lot of activity there. It just wouldn't be people that you, that would probably be outside a lot. would probably be outside a lot.
Okay.
And not having filtered air.
Okay. And as I was looking at your map, it looked like that's the way it was leaning, but I wasn't entirely confident. So thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I had a similar question, but it looks like we concentrated a lot of the residential around Highway 527. Is there, is there not a concern about some of those same air quality issues around 527?
Yeah, it's not as much of a concern because the average daily traffic is less and also carries less freight. So the, the diesel from freight is the other big air quality issue. We are still working out what exactly the buffer would be in the regulatory work, but it doesn't need to be as much. Another thing that is important to consider is airflow and making sure that the air is dispersing. So other design guidance might include using a variety of building forms and types.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions. Oh, Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to express my interest in the T O D. And also, I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about the Main Street concept and what you're envisioning for that.
Yeah. So the idea behind the Main Street is that we would designate neighborhood center streets, and these would be block front designations, and there would be urban design guidance towards them. And we would have two levels potentially. So a very neighborhood, very neighborhood-oriented center street and then a more flexible neighborhood center street. And the idea is that the ground floors would need to be active. They do not need to be retail in particular. We don't know what the market holds for retail going forward. So we want to be really flexible and recognize that it needs to be something feasible and doable. But the idea of having entrances and transparency or windows so that as you're walking by, you know that there are people around, that you get the eyes-on-the-street feel, which means that you have people in the buildings that are looking out and there are lights on in the buildings that are making the street feel cozy even in our dark winter evenings. And so you get that activity with something that the market will support. Does that get at it?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's actually very helpful. The other question that I had is around the traffic on Maltby Road is already just completely hideous. And so I was wondering, have we done traffic mitigation studies? Will we, will we be doing traffic mitigation or some other studies in terms of how to make that flow better, given that it will be having more traffic on it going forward?
Yeah. We are analyzing traffic impacts of the growth here versus what would happen if there isn't this amount of growth. And there's a set of mitigation projects that are included in the package that would be recommended in the sub-area plan. It's not totally set yet. There, if I, this is off the top of my head, so Bruce, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there are intersection improvements proposed at Maltby and Bothell Everett Highway and 9th Ave.
Yes, there are.
I could pull it up.
Actually, we do, we, we actually do have a slide on that. But yes, there are some, what did you, intersection improvements. And that's primarily where most of the improvements would occur, was intersections, other than the extensions, which we'll get a little bit into a little bit later on.
Great. Thank you so much. I really like this concept and meeting all of the PSRC goals is, is superhuman. So, great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Kudos to a great team behind it. It's not just Makers, Burke and Fair and Pierce.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
So I'm very impressed with the work that you have both done. I, I guess my theory that I tend to believe is that Main Street will have, will have the walkability. Is that correct?
Yes. Those would be the focus areas where the walkability is there and the activity is there. But I would add that walkability is an important theme throughout, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But we do want people to be able to walk in shorter paths than what they have today and easier and more choices of where to go. So walkability and bikability throughout is important. But I would say the activity, the levels of human activity, we expect to see on those neighborhood Main Streets or neighborhood Center Streets is higher.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Bruce, Rachel, looks like we're finished with this round of questions.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're getting into the specific land uses. And we want to just go through a series of slides to show you an example of the types of land uses we might expect and what we assumed when we counted our numbers of how many people we'd expect to be here over this long, long vision till 2050, I think, is what we projected out to. So this dark pink area, the office residential mixed use, is the first of three office residential mixed use zones or land use designations that we're talking about. The dark pink one is the most intense one, and then there are two others, a medium and a low. So high, medium, low. And we've set minimum FARs or what we expect that activity unit or dwelling unit per acre density would be. And then the target is what we hope they would come in as. And the market pro forma analysis and feasibility shows that that's the type of activity we might see. So this first set is generally six-plus stories. It would be closest to transit. So having a really high activity level is important. As I mentioned earlier, right close to 405 would probably just see office development so that we're not getting those sensitive uses and the air quality buffer. Okay, next slide. The medium pink zone, office-oriented zone, but again, I forgot to mention on the last slide, residential is also allowed. So it's commercial or residential, ground floor can be retail or whatever. Along the Main Streets, again, that's where we do care what is on the ground floor, and it would need to have entrances and transparency to make sure that it's an active type use. So those yellow streets in there. This medium one would be about three to six stories and the types of buildings you see here. Okay, next slide. And then the lower-density one, again, office is the first use, but residential is also allowed. We expect that this area probably would go residential. And here you start to see, this density level is an interesting one where if it's residential, you would probably see a mix of townhouses and small apartments or mid-sized apartments to hit that density level. Okay, next one. And then further from the transit areas, well, actually Thrasher's Corner is its own transit area. I guess I should say further from the employment center is where we would want to see a lot of residential. And we're counting on these areas that are more residentially-oriented and not as much office or other commercial uses to hit that Snohomish County 4,500 residence growth target. So here we have these higher-intensity, again, it would be about six-story type buildings. And this area in particular would be a longer range, just as, as infill makes sense, kind of thing. Next slide. And then the lighter orange areas. These are, the one in Canyon Park Place is really an important one for connecting out to the neighborhoods beyond. So seeing, and this is a great example here of this type of mixing of apartments and townhouses to get that density level. And then the one that you, the little orange one that's along Bothell Everett Highway between 211th Street and 213th Street would make use of being near North Creek and just being a connector, connecting these two, this kind of swath of mixed use and residential along Bothell Everett Highway. Next slide. Now we get into the purple employment zones. And this is where we know that we have a working business park. It is successful and thriving right now, and we want it to continue so. So these are employment zones. We are proposing that, or recommending that residential uses would not be allowed here. That is consistent with the CCNRs that the business park already has in place. And the idea is that that reduces displacement pressure on existing businesses. So we give a lot of areas where residential is all good, but here we say we're supporting businesses and we want to make sure that there's no pressure for them to move out. So the dark purple is where we expect more density, again, based on proximity to high-capacity transit. I should note that there are local routes that do go through the business center. So if you're lucky enough to live on a local route or get to a local route easily, you can get door-to-door service. Next slide, please. Our lowest-intensity area means that it'll be, we expect it to be pretty similar to what you see out there today. And the reason why we wanted to have a low-intensity area is to keep these really flexible buildings. They might be big, they might be cheaper to build, and it keeps the flexibility for the types of businesses that are already out there. It's, these are minimum densities. So to a certain extent, there's a, there's a higher level that may come in. And we'll talk about maximum densities as we're working through regulatory details later in the process. Next slide, please. So what were the land use designations and introduction to those? Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
First off, thank you for your mentioning air circulation around buildings. I think COVID has taught us anything is that circular, air circulation is kind of a big deal. And, and I do appreciate you're putting residents along areas that are walkable like North Creek. I got to tell you, I still got that echo going on, gang. So if I sound a little disjointed, it's... Anyway, so the question about where there's low employment density, does that allow for more space for manufacturing? What are the person having a lower employment density in some of those areas?
Yes, that's right. It allows for truck loading and unloading larger floor plates that we don't see in the more walkable areas. And just that, that lower construction, the, the less tall buildings for more flexibility for those bigger, more manufacturing spaces. In more urban areas where land values are really high, we are starting to see industrial buildings fit into smaller footprints. So I could see a scenario really long-term where you get more efficient buildings that are taller and that still have those types of uses. But we were trying to be realistic about, about what might happen here.
That's interesting. And it sounds like from what you've planned here that, that as time progress, as the timeline progresses and economy of space, you know, hopefully happens, that that will fit into that area. So, so thank you.
Yeah. The other point I'd say on that also is that we hit the target by being close to transit. And so we didn't need to have higher densities further away from really good transit.
Interesting. You really did have to think of everything.
I have a question, and this, I don't know who's the best, who this is the best question for. What do we know about property tax implications in between commercial and residential uses in terms of like cities' long-term revenue? I see we're going to be talking about a couple different options that we've had presented tonight. And I'm wondering if there's a revenue difference over the long-term between those two?
I don't want to say too much about it. My anecdotal evidence is that in the short-term, you get a lot out of the construction of residence, but in the long-term, you get not that much. And what I understand about the economic, we describe this business park as an economic engine for the city. So the way I've understood that is that has long-term economic benefits to Bothell.
And if you... Sorry? I was just, I was just going to say, I think that that's something that we can kind of do a little investigation on and kind of identify that as something that we kind of go through the process. We haven't really looked at that specifically, but I think it's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bruce. One other question, and I don't know if this belongs in transportation or in land use, but you mentioned the higher densities around transit is one of the ways that, you know, we're able to kind of just meet our growth targets and still have some low-density areas. Have we at all talked about a reduction in parking minimums for those particular areas, given the proximity to transit and what you've already said about walkability and bikability?
Yeah. And I'll get into the pro forma analysis a little bit, but that is one of the things that Burke looked at when they were doing their analysis of how feasible this type of development is. And we did look at parking reduction so that they wouldn't be required to put in as much parking. And that definitely helps the feasibility of development. So it's an important consideration and factor of getting the right-sized parking for the developments coming in and really counting on that transit accessibility to make the case for that.
Awesome. And one other question that I wanted to bring up is electric bikes and different types of micro-mobility come to the forefront. You know, it's hard to drag a 60-pound electric bike wet off the street, up an elevator and into your apartment. Have we had any conversation about what it would look like to have secured bike parking in lieu of car parking? It takes up a lot less space than car parking and encourages... A different form of transportation.
Yeah. It's funny, I'm working with Bob Bankford at Makers, and he's heading up the regulatory work on this. And he just mentioned that the other day that there's a lot of thinking we need to put into bike parking. And so I will pass that along, that that's an important piece for you all.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
I wouldn't drive my car very much if I had to haul it upstairs and put it in my living room.
The other thing I'd like to add there is that we are hoping that a e-bike share or scooter share or something like that would actually become part of the micro-mobility or last-mile transportation that gets people from the flyover stop or the park and ride into the business park, especially up the hill. It's a steep grade change and has local transit that does not have, you know, this high-capacity rate transit heading up there, even though there are a lot of jobs up there.
All right. Not seeing any other questions.
So we're building on a lot of past work with the market and pro forma analysis. The vision way back in 2018 had some market study work put into it. Our existing conditions report had some. The E I, the draft E I S that came out in December 29 had further market analysis and information. And now what I'm presenting tonight is a market study and pro forma analysis that gets us even a little more detail. Okay, next slide. Before I start, I do want to mention that this was put together pre-COVID. So just keep that lens on when we're looking at it. The important point on this slide is the amount of investment that's gone into the business park. Again and again, Bruce has said this is an economic engine with thriving businesses and that these kinds of tenant improvements and additions that you're seeing here with hundreds of new jobs added in the last five years or so really speaks to that. Next slide. This is coming from, from our market study, and it was a positive thing when we got these results from our analysts at Burke to show that we need, let me get this right, for the 565-acre area, to get that 45 activity units or people per acre, we needed about 25,425 people. And what this shows is that we can do it, and we can expect that the market will provide it by 2050. Even at our low scenario, we would get a lot of jobs. And if we fill it in with residents, then we hit that number. So this was a really positive news that we got from our analysts at Burke. Next slide. We also did a pro forma analysis and looked at three sites. And so we did site concepts, laying out the architecture and internal streets and open space that would need to be in each of the sites, and looked at how well they performed and how feasible and how feasible they might be. So the northernmost one was a residential one with one of these main streets and also including a little open space or gathering, public gathering spaces. The larger one in the south was a commercial or office and retail mixed-use space, again included a main street and a public gathering space right along North Creek to make use of that amenity. And then the one to the east was an infill site where we kept one building on the site and then on the parking lot tried to add another building and enough parking to serve both. Okay, next slide, please. And what we found was that the mixed-use one is feasible. It did count on having an MSTE or multifamily tax exemption program, but it actually did well. It is feasible, even today. The commercial redevelopment one was not feasible, but future market conditions could make it so that it is feasible. The commercial infill one, because of having to provide parking for both the old building and the new building, it just wasn't making sense. So it's likely not, that kind of infill right now doesn't make sense. However, there are a lot of owner-occupied buildings where the businesses that are out there are running their businesses and owning the buildings where they're running their businesses. And we heard a lot of excitement and eagerness from those businesses to expand within Canyon Park. So that brings another type of scenario or feasibility level that our typical pro forma analysis wasn't able to address. So what makes their projects pencil may be different than how we analyze things. So we see some promise there. Okay, next slide. Okay, questions on that?
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, you mentioned the commercial infill development wasn't feasible because of parking minimums that we have in place. What sort of parking requirement reduction would be required for those to pencil? Is that something you looked at?
We did not look at thresholds. I could bring that question back to the team.
I mean, if we can get more commercial infill development and more business opportunity in Boffel, I'd love to know kind of what the trade-off would be and really what those parking minimums are costing us over the near and long term.
Okay.
All right. Not seeing any cards, so here we go.
Okay, transportation. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the PM peak hour trips. And the reason why we look at those are because of the concurrency corridors. There are three corridors in the suburb area that the city really cares about. That's how you set all your concurrency standards. And so what we found in our no-action scenario that we analyzed back in 2019 was that the total trips was 3,950, and our preferred alternative brings that number of trips to 5,010. And what's really interesting is that we hit the land use mix really well in our preferred alternative so that there weren't as many trips generated as some of our earlier action alternatives had done. So that was an interesting finding by hitting the right land use mix and getting a really good, as you see the note at the bottom, it assumes a 14% vehicle reduction with aggressive transportation demand management strategies. Next slide. So there are a number of projects, as somebody asked earlier, which projects might be in the mix or what are, how are we mitigating the growth and making sure that we're doing as much as we can for traffic congestion as possible? So the map that you see here are the projects that are under consideration, and I will say this is not a final map, and we have not set all of these in stone yet. But I'll point out that there are a number of new turn lanes at intersections, so a lot of intersection improvements throughout. The really interesting and contentious ones are the street extensions, 20th Ave behind Fred Meyer connecting existing 20th Ave up to Malte Road. That is a fairly straightforward one to put in. It does have wetland buffer impacts and, but it's one that's been supported by both the businesses there and generally supported amongst community members. The 214th Street extension is another one that we've been talking about, and that one really does serve local trips. It's because it's not so well-connected to I-405, we see it as a way to connect people for local trips, getting in and out of the business park. There are two options that we're studying there. And the idea behind all of these is that they relieve congestion on the corridor, they provide additional ways in and out of the park, the business park, business center. It also expands emergency vehicle routes, and it does, right now, especially that 214th connection combined with the 20th connection and a handful of other projects, achieves the current LOS policy under the way we're analyzing it today. Again, I want to emphasize that these are not set in stone. Next slide, please. So what we see here is the LOS analysis results, or the level of delay or how many seconds you're waiting at certain places. And so these corridors, the corridors with that 214th Street extension connecting Boffel-Everett Highway to 9th Ave achieves LOSE. Without it, we, the SR-527 or Boffel-Everett Highway reaches an F. Okay, next slide. So the planning commission had some pretty strong recommendations for how we should approach the transportation ideas and projects to keep in the mix. They really wanted a transit priority and looking at transportation demand management. So how can you reduce commute trips and get people sharing cars or local transit or other ways of getting to their jobs? And focus on moving people, not cars. So a bus carrying 40 people is going to get a lot more people through than a single occupancy vehicle. And then reducing parking and using parking management to be a factor in how people choose whether or not they take a car. And the street extensions, they were generally supportive of them under a few conditions that you see here, as long as they're tied with major improvements to transit, as long as if we are connecting 214th out to 9th Ave, really recognizing that that's a big change for the people living along 9th Ave. And there is a bit more traffic, or maybe more than a bit. There is more traffic that will go out to 9th Ave if 214th is connected for vehicles. So safety improvement sidewalks and bicycle facilities along 9th Ave would need to come first before 214th is connected through. And again, as I mentioned before, public safety vehicle access being a major reason why, and factor as to why these street extensions might be useful. Next slide. And then they also really wanted to see a pedestrian and bicycle focus, and as I mentioned earlier, just the walkability and bikability throughout the area. And so this is a map showing longer-term ways of getting around, mixed with some shorter-term sidewalk gap fill-ins and really particular links that get you to North Creek Trail as an amazing north-south amenity right now, and ways of getting you off of Boffel-Everett Highway and onto this really amazing trail, the future pedestrian and bicycle paths through there. The three-block connections, as I mentioned earlier, will be important. The idea behind these is that they come in with redevelopment, so it's not something that you'd see tomorrow. It would be very long-term, but it would be the little routes that get people walking and biking and even in cars and emergency vehicle access and deliveries closer to buildings and through, through the area. Next slide, please. So given the planning commission's direction to really focus on transit and try to make it as great as it possibly can be, we were asked, and this also came from an inter-agency technical advisory committee that we were working with, with a handful of transit agencies and WashDOT. And there were three ideas that came out of those two groups. And the first one is a reversible center lane. It does, the time that you see here there, the 7.3 minutes is how long the travel time is along Boffel-Everett Highway with this option. It's an intriguing idea. It has a lot of operational issues and might be confusing for riders because they'd sometimes be getting on a bus in the middle of the street, and they'd sometimes be getting on on the side of the street depending on whether it's peak hour or not. Next slide. The, another intriguing idea is this parallel transit route idea, and I think one of you asked about this when you were talking about the 20th Ave extension. Yeah. So that 20th Ave extension could also serve transit. And this one ends up with a 9.1-minute travel time. And right now, the feedback from community transit is that it might be a good option for local routes, but they're hesitant about saying that their green line would do well on these more local streets and with the more turns and perhaps complicating factors there. Next slide, please. And then the third option is bat lanes on Boffel-Everett Highway. It will be a seven-lane street. There is a comp plan project to add an additional lane for one piece that doesn't have it yet. And so the idea here is that that outside lane would convert from general purpose traffic to bat lanes or business access and transit lanes. And that would mean limiting the number of cars or limiting the cars that are in those outside lanes so that transit could go super fast. And what's interesting is you see a five-and-a-half-minute travel time there, two, nine-and-a-half minutes depending on whether or not they get caught at a signal. Next slide, please. So again, those are options that the team is considering right now. Your thoughts and questions?
Councilmember Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. So really interesting. I had a question, though, because you talked about level of service E versus S. Could you go over the full range of level of service grades and what it means?
Yeah. So they're labeled kind of like school grades, that A is the fastest, least delayed at an intersection. The way that, I think what we showed on that slide was concurrency corridor LOS. And so there's both intersection LOS and concurrency corridor LOS. And the concurrency, the corridor LOS, Bruce corrected my wrong, that they take the average of the intersections along it that can come. Yeah. And so LOSE has a certain level of delay, and that is what Boffel expects today. Level F, it's interesting because it sounds like it's failing, but something that mobility folks are talking about right now is that that's not great language to use. It just means that you're, there's more stop-and-go traffic or things are moving a little slower. And what's interesting is that Kirkland, Quilah, Bellevue are all looking at alternative LOS measures and methods and levels of delay to accept for their concurrency purposes. And so the LOS A-through-F grading scale is one way of looking at it, and there are alternative ways to also look at that.
Well, and is there an optimum level? Because really, if you're, if you're A or probably D, the road is bigger than it actually needs to be, and you've wasted money, I assume, building a larger-than-necessary road. So is there a level of service optimum grade?
There probably is, and I bet Carmen from Farron Peers could answer that, and I'll bring that question back to her. Mike, it looks like you're coming back on, too. Did you want to add to that?
Yes, if I could. I think that, I also wanted to point out that a level of service is also a policy choice. So it's up really, it's really up to the local jurisdiction to determine what level of service they're willing to live with, whatever delay that is, however they measure that at the different intersections. So as we talk about the different projects and as we get into that in more detail and we learn what the cost might be of doing a road extension, for example, that might keep that level of service at an E, ultimately, the council will make a decision about whether that cost is worth that level of service or whether it's a policy decision you're willing to live with a lower level of service. And that's an important thing to keep in mind. As Rachel said, F is not really failing. You know, failing is whatever the local jurisdiction determines it is and what they're willing to live with. So just to keep that in mind as we talk about the different, the different options and the potential transportation improvements, whether they be transit or roadway improvements we're talking about.
Well, I appreciate that. That's why I asked the question, because it would be easy to assume F is failing. But, you know, there are certain realities that we have to live with and trade-offs that we have to make. So that was a good point. The other question that I had, which is not really pertaining to this specific section, but I, I was thinking of it, and so forgive me if it's out of sequence. This obviously is showing a changed boundary line for the regional growth center. And so I'm wondering where we are in the process of, I don't know if it's legal, but with PSRC, I assume we have to go through some sort of process in order to make that change valid. So could you maybe tell us where we are in that process? Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely. I know early in the process, we checked in with PSRC to propose the idea to them, and they were very amenable to the idea. And Bruce, you may have more recent information on that. If you do, please go ahead.
Well, yes. In fact, one of the things that we will have to do is that we will have to take this subarea plan down to PSRC for their certification and their chance to take a look at our homework, if you would, to make sure it does comply with their criteria. It was a very interesting discussion we've had with PSRC as we've gotten along because as we've talked about before, there's a lot of wetlands and buffers and stream items out there that are just unbuildable. And it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to say, well, we have to meet a certain activity unit on these unbuildable lands. It just made it really tough for us to meet our, our traffic concurrency and as well as achieve our reasonable amount of activity levels. So they were supportive of this nation of revising the boundaries. They didn't have a particular concern with it, and as long as within the parameters, they were fairly supportive, and it was pretty nice to see that.
That's great. Yeah, I just, last time we showed what we were kind of thinking, and this is the first time we've actually got the planning around that boundary change, so I was just curious what that process was like. Thank you, Bruce.
You bet.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate all the work our planning commission has done on this, and I partly support their recommendations for this. I also just want to say I love the idea of bat lanes as well. I have one question. And the other considerations attachment to in the landscape area, it's getting to transportation, I promise, it says that we need to require street trees and planting strips between the street and the sidewalk. And I have always wondered why it is that we have a sidewalk, and then we have street trees that are a natural barrier, and then we have a bike lane, and then we have cars. Why do we not move the bike lane onto the other side of the street trees if we're looking to have a more walkable, bikable area? It's not adding space, it's just moving things around to protect it so people are more likely to do that. Like, is there a way we can build something like that into this?
You are going to love the shared-use path concepts that are in, in the long-term transportation and bike plan.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. It's not on every street that we're proposing that, but where it makes sense, where it makes sense to widen an existing sidewalk that's already on the backside of trees. Yeah.
Fantastic. That's really good to hear.
I just wanted to say, I like your line in there with the concept of moving more people and not more cars, really focusing on the transit and, and just the density of transportation and not just the throughput of single-vehicle cars. So I like to see that concept coming to the forefront more.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question around, as we plan towards 2050. The numbers, the transportation numbers that we're using, do those take into consideration growth north of us as well?
It does take into consideration what we're calling background growth. It does take into consideration what we're calling background growth. So just regional growth, um, and the trips that would happen regardless of what happens in this plan.
Okay. And so, um, one of the things that, um, being part of some of the transportation committees that, that I've often heard is, is an example, um, when we get to Lake City Way and we get to 145th, they're having issues with, uh, time for, you know, how long it takes, head time. So my question would be around transportation and we're building this, we're planning towards this, and then there's additional growth or something that comes that we're not, that we're not planning for, but it sounds like we are planning for that, um, to happen and ensuring that those times that we're seeing today are actually times that are realistic so that in 2040, 2050, we don't get down there and find out, okay, instead of, you know, five or nine, nine point five, it's actually 20 minutes, right? Uh, because patterns change, people's habits change, right? And depending on where the traffic is coming from, how heavy it is, they may change their routes, uh, similar to like 405. People may travel 405 going south instead of going to 145th. So, um, you know, the more BRT, the more, you know, we don't have link light rail coming here, so anything that we can do to plan ahead for what those pieces are going to look like is, I think is important. So thank you.
Well, taken. Sorry. I interrupted somebody. Maybe not. Yes, earlier in our traffic analysis, we did realize that, um, some of that background growth was, um, well, and growth in general, was causing a lot of traffic on Bothell Everett Highway. And we realized, um, just what you're saying, that traffic patterns are going to change. And so once they see that it's backed up that much, we were, um, we realized, oh, you know what, there's a, there's a certain percentage of these trips that are actually going to take a different route. Um, and so that played into, um, what, uh, where we assumed everybody is going.
Councilmember McAuliffe, did I see your card?
Thank you. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the whole concept of the residential, the mobility and, um, all that you've done. Thank you, Bruce, and thank you very much, too.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Thank you. I, I guess I'm looking for an, an affirmation that I'm understanding this correctly or my impressions are correct. I saw talking about parking management and so the question that was going through my head was, um, is that going to allow for staggered work hours? So, so that, you know, more people are working of a, uh, a, um, businesses open longer with people coming and going and doing their work shifts. And then I thought, well, it would be foolish to think that we will never have another kind of COVID hit and that's going to impact, that's going to impact how we use transit and how we use, you know, how we go to work. And so my impression is, I, I, we do refer up towards, um, uh, as we got, I think it was, was it no nineteen seventeen, that there, a twenty-four hour concept to activity of, and so I thought, well, it sounds like you're building flexibility into this area so that it's not necessarily a nine to five heavy use that if the community down the road needs to stagger how they work and how they, um, you know, commute for their, just for their, you know, going to the grocery store, this will support that. Is that the right impression?
I think that is the right impression and I may have been overly optimistic with twenty-four hours, maybe I should have said eighteen hours.
Okay.
Yes. Commute trips and parking, um, staggering shifts, um, using shared parking strategies and prethinking, um, how people are going to be getting to transit. And for example, um, existing stations or future stations, there's been a lot of, um, what do they call it, hide and ride, where people drive up to the station and park in a residential street and leave their car there and take their transit. So prethinking those kinds of parking issues was the other thing we were getting at at parking management. That's another reason why while Bothell is still suburban in nature and the areas around here, the park and rides are still important. So all of those parking strategies, but yes, eighteen hour a day, staggering, um, a better mix of jobs and residents and in and out throughout the, throughout the day and evening and early.
We are very familiar where we live with hide and ride, so, and I know that it's all over the place. But the more that we require of an area, that flexibility is really important. So I'm glad that, that you're thinking about all the scenarios and how do you make all those pieces knit? It's because it's one big machine that you've got working up there and you want all those cogs to be moving the way they should. So thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I think we have just a few songs left. Should we go ahead and wrap up?
Let's do it.
So I was going to finish up this little presentation by identifying to you that we do have some next steps. In fact, there are next steps that are coming quite quickly. In June, the planning commission is going to do some study sessions on this. We're going to have a much more detailed discussion with the planning commission. They have a little bit more time than you. We're also working on some type of an online open house or, or feedback or webinar. We're kind of working out the details on that. We're also going to complete our environmental evaluation. That's a really key focus on now that we've got the pieces together, now we have to understand what the impacts are with the community. In July, we're going to have public hearings before the planning commission. We're going to have, again, more public engagement, hopefully, maybe even in person. We'll just have to see how things go. We're also going to issue our final EIS. That'll be the last thing. This is not the last chance that the council will have at this. You're going to have plenty of opportunities to look at these policy decisions and choices and have some more, uh, basically some more input as well as direction on this. Uh, and that's something that we're really looking forward to quite, uh, strongly because we have spent a lot of time on these technical analysis. We have the questions, now we're going to start looking to you folks for the answers. So thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
Bruce, Rachel, Mike, thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions to wrap it up? Councilmember McAuliffe?
We're going to miss you, Bruce. Thank you so much, Bruce. We're going to miss you.
Well, thank you very much. I only have 22 days, but who's counting?
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, echo that, going to miss you, uh, wholeheartedly, Bruce. Um, I did have one follow-up question on, uh, open space. The considerations for open space and stuff like that as we go through the planning process. Uh, so will we be hearing more, more about that?
Most assuredly, yes, you will.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing anything else. So thank you again. Great presentation. We look forward to hearing more.
Thank you very much. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you. This is not the last time you'll see Bruce. Thank you, uh, both Bruce and Rachel for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you all.
All right. Onto our final item of, of the evening, uh, council conversations. If anyone has a topic that they would like to discuss, bring forward. Councilmember Doer.
Uh, am I right to assume they have to be COVID related?
Nope.
No. That restriction has been lifted, can be anything.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, I, I'm going to wait because I don't know actually if there's a, a topic I can bring up, so.
All right. Well, we know the, the rules now, so, uh, councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I'd still like to throw out that idea of, uh, us as a council and the city employees getting together and, and go out and showing the people that we support what's going on right now. Uh, I don't know if we want to talk to the city manager about setting that up or, or how we want to do it, or if we want to do it on a weekend, or if we want to do it on a weeknight. I, I mean, it matters not, but I just think, I, I just think if we show our support and we tell them that we are a city of inclusion, uh, that that will help a little bit, maybe do a little healing. Just food for thought. Everybody ask, tell me what you think.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea. I would just say that there are, uh, events that are already going on that we might not have to do something special for. We could join something that's already in plan and show our support that way as well. Um, and I'd be up for either one.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, Tom, thank you. That, that is just an awesome idea. I think if, if we stand together, um, and we show solidarity in working together, um, police, fire, um, public works, the entire city showing how we work together and we stand together, um, and we invite our community to come out and be part of something like that. It's going to be difficult because of the, the social distancing, but I think it's important for that, for us to put some form of a message out, uh, how much of, you know, I, I mean, our gear that turns is always community is the biggest one, right? So, um, yeah, if we can find a way to do that, um, and keep social distance, I think it would, you know, just what I know, what we saw on those street corners, Tom, when we were down there, we're talking to the folks from our community, I think, um, I think it would be good, so.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really have been struggling with how we would best respond. I know that some of you have joined the marches and you've been on the street corners, but as a city council, either if it's a proclamation or something that we could say to, I think that's important. So I want to support whatever direction we go, but I think as a city council, we want to make a statement.
Councilmember Doer.
I would agree. I mean, I think maybe writing a resolution, um, because the city manager has spoken very eloquently, but I think council needs to speak as well.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
This is, uh, this is just thinking out loud. I, I don't know how married I am to it. You, you know, you know how there's, you know, meet you at the pole where kids at school meet and they pray for their school around the flagpole? We're not going to do that. But I was thinking, would the community want to rally? I would need, I know most of the lyrics to "We Shall Overcome," but I probably would need a cheat sheet. But I was thinking if, you know, if community and city and city staff and city council were to make a, a six, six foot, you know, spacing around, uh, city hall? Or is that just a big lift that, you know, to try to get that many bodies of people showing unity around city hall and that, and then I thought, well, maybe we should do something down by the, well, once we get the "Welcome to Bothell for a Day or a Lifetime" sign cleaned up. Is there something we could do for that? Or, or is there some message that we could give at the bridge? I don't know. Any rate, there's a lot of creative ways that we could speak in pictures and also speak with words. So just some ideas I was going to toss out there.
Councilmember Thompson.
You know, one idea that I, um, heard at one of the marches was, um, we are obviously not having a Fourth of July parade this year. So what would it look like to open up some streets and essentially have a march that we hold in Bothell? Not necessarily with, you know, people on the side watching to make sure that we're being safe, um, but what would it look like instead of a Fourth of July parade, we hold a march in support of everything that's going on right now? Not everybody all at once.
Well, part of, part of, part of the challenge is, is how are we going to, you know, one of the reasons why we're not having the Fourth of July parade is that social distancing factor. And as a city, are we creating something where we're not having that social distancing?
I think if we did it, like, if there weren't crowds on the side watching, like there are on a parade, like, I think we could march and, and maintain that social distance just like people are on the weekends already. But, again.
Councilmember Doer, did you want to say something?
Well, I was trying to understand, um, so maybe I didn't understand what councilmember Agnew was suggesting, but this, I mean, it seems very similar to what councilmember Thompson has suggested, is, is, you know, doing something to show our support. I assume it's, um, Black Lives Matter. And so I guess the question is, could the city, is it, is it, um, legitimate for the city to hold, to hold a, a march? Or, or council to, um, have us hold a march and invite the community to march with us? Maybe I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm wondering legally if that's something that we can do? Because I, I, I'm very much interested in that.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Um, I guess I'm not so supportive of a march as I am supportive of the message. The message that we want to get across is how much, um, community response that we feel for our people. We want to respond to our people in the community and say, you know, how much we appreciate them, how much we want their safety. I, I just think a proclamation, something that we could put on, online, on Facebook and whatever, and, and have the message out there. I think that's really important. One of the things that I think we value a lot is that in our police department, we have really exceptional people and, and navigators that are there for people who are struggling. So I just think we should make a statement, um, and that proclamation, I think we'd go farther than a march. So that's just my feeling.
I, 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 I agree with Rosemary on that. And then, uh, I think councilmember Thompson was saying that there's a number of events that council could put a physical presence in there.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I think, um, councilmember Doer, um, the resolution, I think, is, is a fabulous idea. And I think we all should have a voice on this. We all, we all need to say from our own experience where we're coming from. Um, so that was elegant, we could, um, just like the city manager, um, her, her story resonated, uh, with me tonight and I think we all have a story to tell. I, I'm not, I don't necessarily know if I agree with having a, a march per se, but what I, what I would like to do is have a platform where our community can come and listen to us speaking from our own words and experience to them. There was a very powerful event in Woodinville in which people got up and spoke about their experiences, um, and where they stood on things. And I think that it's important that we have that conversation, but I think it's also important that we're careful, uh, with where we put ourselves in a situation where we can also be attacked. Um, so, but I think it's important that we have a platform. We have that platform where we represent forty-seven thousand people in Bothell, um, but we want to make sure that they know we're accessible. So I don't think, you know, financially, we don't want to put the city under stress of, you know, possibly having marches and costing thousands of dollars, but we do want to do something to ensure that our voices are heard by our community. And that's not only council, but that's also our police department. Because I think they're the ones who are, are feeling it, um, just as much as, as people of color, they're feeling it on the other side, uh, of being attacked and, and things talked about, defunding and things like that. So we want- So we want what we're doing. I think the chief is going to come speak to, or speak to that in our next meeting, so that is, that'll be monumental there for the community to hear that. But, you know, if we can, if we can create a platform for us to at least stand in front of our community and speak to them, I think it would be important.
I didn't mean to quiet the room now.
Just a lot of, a lot of good ideas swirling around, and I think, you know, just finding the right one and finding that nexus and that energy to really coalesce around something. It's, you know, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I think there's definitely a desire to get together and have, like you were saying, be available, sharing stories, sharing your own stories and sharing your thoughts. So it's, it definitely sounds like there's a desire there. Just what exactly, what form it is, is, is the challenge. Councilmember McAuliffe?
I know we're just about ready to wrap it up, but I think I agree with Councilmembers Agnew and McNeil. Everybody has a story, and everybody should be able to talk about that story, because just like Jennifer Phelps, she did such a beautiful job tonight, we all have a story. And somehow, our community needs to know who we are and where our story is. So I'm going to leave it up to some of you that think it's true, but, yeah, I think they know who, I think they need to know who we are and how we care.
Councilmember McNeil, were you raising your card?
I was going to just say, I think the one thing that I think we need to come away with is an action item, because it's, lack of an action can happen if we don't say we're going to do something. So somehow, we just keep the conversation going, that's all.
Can we just, can we start with getting a resolution going and sign off on it?
Yeah, I think everyone's nodding. I think it's something that we can work on.
Great first step.
Oh, Councilmember Doer.
I'm going to close the meeting.
A second.
All right, so we have the motion to adjourn, and we have a second. Everyone, raise their yellow cards if they agree. All right, there we go. Thank you, everyone, and I imagine we'll all have some conversations in the, in the near future. Have a great night.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.